Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for August 24th, 19 -- I'm sorry, 2017. It's not an omen, I promise. First of all, if you have a phone with you, or as we were getting earlier, a pager, you might silence it now. And I'll just give you fair warning, it's going to be a long day. You feel free to get up and leave the chamber if you need to, but please do so quietly. Once your item has been heard, you're certainly welcome to go sit someplace more comfortable. If you want to speak -- yes, I don't have any slips. If you -- there's an item here that you're interested in speaking to. If you would go to the desk outside and get a slip that looks just like -- and fill it out for us, that would be very helpful. Before we start, for those of you who might be here for the first time today, the way this works is we'll call the cases in turn. The applicant will come and kind of explain to us what it is. He's requesting. We may have some questions of him or her. We'll ask if other people are here that want to be heard on the matter. Those folks will speak. We may have some questions of them as well. The applicant will probably speak again. We may speak amongst ourselves. And then we'll vote on each item in turn. When you come to the microphone, please give us your name and address for the record. And before we start today, we are welcoming a new planning commissioner, this brave soul who's signing up to help us out here, Scott Cravens, with whom I served on the Board of Adjustment. He is going to continue to serve on the Board of Adjustment as chairman for the next year, which I so much appreciate. He was born and raised here in Oklahoma City, is that right? I think that's right. And comes from a multi-generational background of commitment to public service to Oklahoma City. He's an attorney and a senior vice president at Trust Company of Oklahoma, and we are lucky to have him, so welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
We're going to start with the receipt of the minutes from the July 13th, 2017 meeting.
I wouldn't hear a can motion.
Oh, you actually can, we're just receiving them.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We're going to have to do it faster than this, guys, we're going to be here all day. And I have a motion and a second to receive the minutes of the July 13th meeting. Would you express your vote, please? They're received. Next, we have our continuance request. These are items that are agreed to continue.
Yes, I'm going to read the number of items that have been requested for continuance and the date, so there are several items on the agenda. On your agenda, item B-30 for case PUD 1645 to defer to December 14th. Item B-44 for case ABC 894 is withdrawn. And then several of these next items will be deferred to September 14th. That will be B-45 on the agenda for case C-6920. Item B-46 on the agenda for case CE 956. Item B-47 for case PC 10506. Item 48 on the agenda, which is PUD 1649. And item 49 on the agenda, which is case C-6880. And then to defer to September 28th is item B-50 for case SPUD 967. And then on your agenda, item B-51, case C-6892, defer to November 9th. Item B-52 is case PUD 1581, defer to December 14th. And item B-53, case C-6715, also defer to December 14th.
Is there anybody present here today that thought that they were going to be heard on one of those matters? Do I have a motion to continue these items?
Motion to continue.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue items 30 and 44 through 53 on the agenda. Cast your votes, please. Continue.
We've also received a new request for continuance for item B-29 on the agenda for case PUD 61 -- 1651 to defer to September 14th.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue item number 29. Cast your votes, please. It is continued. Do I have any additional requests for continuance?
Dean Colletta, KBG Engineering. Item number 23, C-6924, final plat of places at Fountain Lake. Like to continue for a couple of weeks to the next scheduled meeting to work out a TE with a property owner.
Our next scheduled meeting is the 14th of September, is it not?
Correct. September 14th.
Yes, that's good.
Do I have a motion to continue this item? First of all, is there anybody else here who wants to be heard on that item? Anybody that thought they were going to be heard on item number 23?
Move for continuance. Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue item number 23. Cast your votes, please. It's continued.
Thank you.
On the 14th. Next, we have our consent agenda. These are items that are relatively routine. However, if there's one that you hear that you think you want to speak to, please let us know.
I'll read the items off for the record on the consent docket. There are 13 items. Item number one is CE 957. Item number two is PC 10502. Item number three is PC 10503. Item number four is PC 10504. Item five, PC 10507. Item six is ABC 889. Item seven is ABC 900. Item eight is C-6916. Item nine, C-6917. Item 10, C-6918. Item 11, C-6919. Item 12, C-6922. And item 13 is C-6923.
We have someone who wants to be heard on item number 11, so we'll pull it. We'll pull it. If -- do I have a motion on the consent docket?
Move the consent docket.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move items 1 through 10, and 12 and 13. Cast your votes, please. They are adopted, passed. What should I say about that? Approved. Yes, approved.
And then item 11 is case C-6919, the final plat of Stonebrier Section 7. Philip Colotrino.
So, the applicant come forward, please.
Excuse me, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates here on behalf of the applicant. This is the final section of Stonebrier. You can see that there's been six other sections prior to this over the last 10 years. And we meet all the staff's recommendations, and that's why it's on the consent docket.
I do have someone who's signed up to speak. Mr. -- is it Colotrino?
Yeah, Colotrino.
Do you come forward, please? Give us your name and address for the record.
Sure.
It's Philip Colotrino, 19816 Crest Ridge Drive, Edmond, Oklahoma, the Stonebrier area.
What would you like to tell us?
Well, I got a bone to pick with the proposal. The developer is not taking care of the common property behind. There's a rash of dead trees been going on. Soapberry trees are diseased. The past four years, we've had -- well, I brought numerous emails and whatnot and pictures. It's also a nature area, and I feel that if this gets developed to its fullest, it will cut down for the wildlife that we have in the area. I do have some pictures, if you'd like to see them.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. I will tell you that this property is, you know, it's already zoned, and it's -- we've already approved a preliminary plat, so I'm not saying you're completely out of time, but --
No, I understand that the develop -- development is fine. It's taking care of the common area. I guess you'd call that a green belt. Because when all those trees die, there's not going to be a green belt. And up to -- makes sense, doesn't it?
It does.
And it'll, of course, destroy property values for the people that live up against the green belt, which is, you know, one of the reasons why I purchased that home. Some of the trees, as you can see, has been going on for four years. They have a fungus. I've had OU scientist out. I've tried treating them myself. I don't have the financial means. The previous owner, John Coleman, did do some spraying, but the new owners that took over the development, the property owners, have not done anything, nor will they return any type of emails or messages to do anything about the trees. And it's probably affecting about 100-yard swath, goes all the way through the green belt, and it's approximately 40 trees. If they're not going to fix them, then cut them down, because they're hanging over my fence, they're hanging over the neighbor's fence, and they're dead. And eventually, the wind's going to knock down the trees and ruin fence lines, and so on and so forth.
I very much appreciate your concern and the frustration that must be involved in that. That is really way beyond our purview here. Mr. Johnson is a representative of the developer. We might speak to him about this, and he might have some suggestions for you about ways that you can get the developer's attention.
That's a great idea. Thank you so much for letting me appear.
I appreciate you coming down, taking the time to do it.
Thank you.
I would like to comment that this is also a blue line. It's controlled by the Corps of Engineers. Technically, you cannot, without a nationwide permit, you really cannot cut down trees. That's not to say that you can't get a nationwide permit to cut down trees. And I will convey on to the developer of the remaining tract what needs to be done. The other thing is, I'm not sure how much of this has been conveyed to the HOA, which is -- some of it probably has at this point in time, so I'll get -- I'll dig into all that, and we'll communicate that.
I appreciate that very much. I would note for the commission that the final plat conforms to the subjective regulations and the approved preliminary plat. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 11. Do you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
It is approved. So, now we start on the real deal here.
Moving on to items requiring separate vote, item number 14 is case PUD SP 1515F for a specific plan to PUD 1515.
The applicant come forward, please? Oh, we have to give him a minute.
Thank you for your patience. I'm old and decrepit. Tim Johnson, again, on behalf of the applicant. This is the site plan approval for Uncle Julio's Restaurant to be located around what's called the Point at Chisum Creek. As you've seen the site plan, and I'm sure you've read the staff report, the parking surrounding Uncle Julio's will serve them, Eye Fly's right here, Memorial Road, and then there'll be other buildings come along, and I'm going to show you in a few items down the road that we've got some lot splits that we're asking for. So, we believe this is in conformance with the pod. And the elevation on the building's very attractive. Uncle Julio's is a new Mexican restaurant to Oklahoma City, and so the building materials all meet the PUD requirements. I was a bit surprised by the staff report and the traffic staff asking us to remove the existing driveway on Memorial Road. That driveway was permitted in late 2015 and constructed thereafter. The permit went through the eighth-floor building department, as all driveway permits do. We were not asked at that point to provide any site distance queries or studies. And the driveway obviously had been there serving the site for a number of years. They used this as a construction entrance initially to do the work around the pond. This site will also have two access points on Pawnee, which is served by Signal at the frontage road and ties into the overpass bridge on the Turnpike. This is a ride-in, ride-out driveway, meaning the Memorial Road, frontage road is a one-way. Those type of drives do not typically cause conflict, but the staff has brought up the fact that they want to see a longer site distance than what is actually existing today. The site distance for 45 miles an hour is 620 feet, and the site distance we provide today is where the driveway exists is 550 feet. So it's a little short of what they would like to see, and that's why on this application, we have a variance to that distance. About 400 feet, just under 400 feet.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this item today? Commissioners, do you have questions, comments, concerns?
I will point out, too, that the Pawnee intersection is signalized. So there's a signal upstream of this driveway.
Well, it seems to me that the -- I won't say it's the only, but the main issue with respect to the application is the drive. Will you come forward and speak to us about this?
Good afternoon, Richard McCubbin, Traffic Management. We received the application for the specific plan and noticed that there was a connection to Memorial. It was after we had received the application for the deed approval. Our comments on the deed approval, which is item number 17 on the agenda, were that there'd be no access to Memorial. We found out that this driveway existed already, so we went out and did a site distance. Driveways are not permitted to the Traffic Management Division. The PUD does not specifically prohibit driveways on Memorial, but it also does not spell out any driveways on Memorial. It spelled out access at Pawnee, at Western, but it did not spell out any access onto Memorial. We went out to this location and measured the site distance. I had to stand in the street because of the landscaping berm that sits just back behind the curb, just so we could measure the site distance. We did it 400 feet. In the package, there's included a couple of photographs we took at the site. Obviously, he has those or not, but you can see in the photographs that are in your package that you cannot see a full-size SUV coming over that hill. And while there is a traffic signal at Pawnee, when it's green on Memorial, people will be coming over that hill and not expecting anyone to be coming out of this driveway, just 400 feet down from the intersection. We're concerned that this is a life-safe health -- life-safe health issue, and we don't want to create any safety issues.
What's the discrepancy in the distance, Mr. Johnson, that you're giving us versus what staff has given us? As you said, 500 and...
50.
Okay.
And that's based on topographic information that we had on the site, as opposed to measuring with the device that they use.
We use a laser rangefinder and a reflective beacon so that we can go out there and measure precisely where it is.
Is it accurate that the ride-in, ride-out typically causes less conflict?
If you can see. We -- when we first went out there, it was one of the days that we got out there just as the skies opened up on us, and we had actually parked in that driveway and trying to get out of there. I drive a small SUV, and I had a hard time seeing to get out of there.
Okay, so, my question, I guess to you, Mr. Johnson, is do you need a continuance to see if you can work this out, or are we going to vote on it today? What are we going to do?
Well, the developer wants to keep the driveway. It's in, it was permitted. They'd like to keep it. And it's an integral part of this addition and circulation that will ultimately serve the whole Point area. Unfortunately, we didn't know about traffic's concern about this until I read the staff report when I got back in town on Tuesday. So, you know, we've had little time to react, had little time to communicate. I did talk to Eric Winger briefly, but he's been too tied up to really give me a response.
So would you like a little more time to communicate?
I mean, I don't think they want to wait a month. Is our next meeting, do we have a month?
September 14th.
So it's two weeks, roughly. I'll agree to a two-week continuance, just to maybe get some better insight from Public Works.
Quick question, if I may. The master plan for the development, we have another case on our agenda today that deals with the area immediately south of this? Am I interpreting that drawing right?
South and east.
Okay. And what is the contemplated use of that? That's all going to be, is that part of the office portion of the development?
No, it's all going to be restaurants. And that's independent of this, and in the other, we're going to agree that there's no more driveways. There's very limited access that's permitted on the frontage road by OTA and ODOT. This happens to be one of the few spaces that allows for a drive.
So, you have a motion for continuance, September 14th?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue this item, September 14th. Cast your votes, please. It's continued.
Thank you.
Item number 15 is SP 498 to permit a special permit for a convention center in the downtown
Good afternoon. I'm Kevin Cook with Populous out of Kansas City, working on the new convention center. I'm on the project architect, and we are here to request a special permit for our site. A convention center is, under my understanding, allowed in this site, it just requires a special use permit, and that's what we're here today. So I wanted to give you guys a quick update on the project. We are currently in, towards the end of our final plan documentation for this, for the project, and I'm sure you guys have probably kept up a little bit on some of the coverage we've had on the news and other things, as this is a big project for the whole city. So I'll just start here and give you guys a quick overview today of where we're at. So our project here on the screen, or in front of you, you can see, is located just south of the Chesapeake Arena, kind of centered between the downtown core and the shore of We currently have a 550,000 gross square footage building. It has a 200,000-square-foot exhibit hall planned for it, it's at Grade. It has 45,000 square feet of meeting space that's filtered on all three levels of the building, you can see here in green. And then on the top floor, there's a 30,000-square-foot ballroom. So if you look at the drawings here, off to the right-hand side, you can see each level of the building, and you see how the exhibit hall dominates basically the ground floor of the building. That's there for access for the loading dock and trucks that typically fill that type of use of the building. There's some meeting space on the first floor, and then you get up to Level 2, which is strictly all meeting rooms. These meeting spaces have operable walls in some of the rooms that allow different flexibilities of the space. And then when you move up to the third floor, you have two pods of meeting rooms on the north and the south end, with the ballroom situated in the middle. There's a large pre-function space in the west front side of the ballroom that then allows you to open up and then reach out to the balcony that extends out to overlook the new city park. So here's a view, just going to be some renderings of the building exterior shots that we have. This is a view looking at the building on the western side, as if you're standing on in the park, looking south on Robinson. You can see that the tall glass and the large roof canopy is what's over top of the large ballroom space, and you can see the balcony there to the right. The large glass is kind of an atrium-like entrance to the building, our main focal entrance. And then there's another one a little farther south. The glass to the left, and then to the far end, is both meeting pods at both ends of the building. The meeting rooms are positioned up against the glass of the building, so they have views inside the rooms to look out to the park. This is a view, standing inside the new city park, looking back at the building. You kind of get to see the height and scale of this, the project, from there. This image is a little bit farther north than the previous one we just looked at, still looking south on Robinson. You get to see that the main corner of the meeting rooms pods, and then you can kind of get a glimpse to the side there of what the potential future hotel, where it would be located, and how these two buildings would work in relationship to each other. This is now standing on Robinson, looking north, back towards downtown. This would be the southern-end meeting pod. Again, very similar to the north, meeting rooms up against the glass and circulation there between the glass and then the ballroom and balcony area. This view is just a little bit stepped back to let you see a little more of what it looks like from a higher level. And then this is a really interesting view. We've always liked this shot because it really shows how different this area, this district downtown, will really be with the new park and the convention center and hotel and other things. As you look north on Robinson, it'll be quite a transformation of that area. This exterior view is standing on the, kind of the off-ramp of Shields, looking to the north, and you get a small glimpse of our exterior side. The exterior side is basically is that, and we've meant it to be that, in the sense that the loading dock is back there, it's fully screened. It has all the access for all the service and deliveries and other items happen behind the building to allow the western side, which faces the park, be the more focal and pedestrian experience more on that end. So here's a snapshot aerial of what the area can look like. You can see the existing Cox Center there at the north end, the Chesapeake Arena. We've got a placeholder, just block-massing of what the hotel would be, and then you can see our building with surface parking to the south, and then the new park just west of our building. The surface parking is, right now, kind of a decision that we've put in place, because the scope of our work was to show the ability of this building to expand in the future someday. And so where the surface parking is shown is where the building would grow if that actually comes to fruition. And then this here is a panoramic view, standing on the ballroom balcony, and how you can see all the way from Skydance Bridge all the way up to downtown from that view across the new park. We've got just a couple of quick interior shots. These are -- these were take -- rendered a few months back, but they're giving you just a look and feel of what the inside of the building's starting to feel like, some of the materials. Warm materials with some more modern, sleeker materials kind of tied together. This is coming in that main glass atrium space. That's where all of our circulation happens at both ends of the building, is in the circulation atriums to get up to each level of the building. This is a typical shot of some meeting spaces beyond and some built-in furniture and other seating areas that happen outside the meeting spaces for people to congregate. This is what one of the meeting rooms would look like if it's fully enclosed, and the wall to the right would be one of the operable partitions that could open up to the next meeting room to give you a bigger space. You start to see some of the glass and light that is allowed in a lot of these rooms, which is really good to get the natural daylight in that a lot of older convention centers these days don't have and people like to have in their space. This is up on the upper level to the south end of the new ballroom. This is what we've been calling the junior ballroom. It's actually three meeting rooms that can be opened up completely, and it's roughly 10,000 square feet, which gives you about the size of a junior ballroom in most convention centers. And then here's a shot from inside the new ballroom. You can see you're looking west, but the wall can open up a little bit and let you get the views out to the park from there. And then I put this slide in here just to give you a quick snapshot of the site, a little bit of the landscaping and hardscape that's going around the building. You can see where we've got some alternates here, which would be the surface parking lot we talked about, and then the fourth-street connection between lot we talked about, and then the Fourth Street connection between us and the hotel is an area we'd like to look at and study when the hotel team is involved to help with some of those discussions. So with that, any questions?
So on the surface parking, that's just south of it, you said that that is not within your scope? That's just something that you've shown?
It is something that's currently in our scope, but we're carrying it as an alternate because it wasn't initially in our scope. Our scope was really from Fourth Street to Sixth Street with the ability to expand there. So the city has asked us to include an option to put the surface parking in place today, and so we're documenting that fully, and it'll go out in the package as an alternate for the contractor to bid on. Did the bids come in low or, you know, favorably? It could be an option that we can include.
I'm probably speaking way above my pay grade here, but I would hope that we can put a higher and better use on our very expensive park than surface parking. That's it.
Commissioner Highsmith, did you get your questions answered related to the docking and everything? Did you get your?
Yes.
Okay. All right. If there are no questions, I'll move for adoption.
Well, let's see if there's anybody else who wants to be heard on this matter here today.
Move for adoption.
Commissioners, do we have any other comments, questions, concerns? No? I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt item number 15. Do you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
Okay, item number 16 is ED 219, and this is a, this is an ED easement dedication, right? For, we hardly ever see these. To dedicate Timberline Court and Creekside Court to the public. This is located at southeast 179th Street. It does require a variance for site distance from the subdivision regulations.
Mr. Johnson, this is your day.
Johnson and Associates is back. This was before the, at the last meeting, but we didn't have six votes. This is a street that was designed and approved through the Public Works Department. It's out in the rural part of southeastern Oklahoma City, and Commissioner Allen will remember, we went round and round with the neighbors out there. The original developer wanted to build one-acre lots, and we came back and, with this five-acre lot plan, that really didn't require a plat through the city, but required a plat of survey for the five-acre tracts, and we built the streets to city standard with the initial thought that they'd be private. The developer has opted to make them public. They meet all city standards. They were inspected by the city staff, et cetera, and were approved. So they were built, and they're there today. The site distance issue again is a, this is a difficult tract in that it, there's a ridge right on our property corner to the southwest, and then it drops like a son of a gun down to the creek, probably 40 feet, 50 feet. What we would ask for is this variance. Again, we are off the mark. You can see how steep this falls. So our site distance issue is here, the proposed site distance is 567, and I think the, because the speed limit out there is 55, unfortunately, our site distance requirement is 750. What we would suggest and request is that we'd have the ability to put, and this is all over rural Oklahoma City, put signs showing the T-intersection traffic entering and exiting. If we had to move this far enough to make the 750 work, we would be here for variance on the separation. So it's, and because of the floodplain being huge, this is the direction that we took in the design and how it was approved. So again, we're in a position, we have to request the variance and ask that we be able to post some signage through the Traffic Commission.
Is there anybody present who wants to be heard on this matter today? Commissioners, comments, questions, concerns?
Tim, this is pretty much inconsistent, or being consistent with what's happening down, was it Midwest Boulevard? The ones, and are the houses going to be about the same? Or do you even know at this?
I do know. They're being built by the same builder that built the houses on Midwest Boulevard.
Okay.
And so they're going to be in the same size and price range.
So is it the same developer?
Yes.
Okay.
He just came to his senses.
Four corners?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I don't have any other questions, and I would make a motion to approve the variance.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the variance on item number 16. Do you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
It's approved.
Motion to approve the application.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 16. Do you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
And item number 17 is DA 25033. It's a lot split deed approval for 1310 West Memorial Road. A variance is also requested for the number of lot splits on the subdivision by the subdivision regulation.
Again, Tim Johnson, on behalf of the applicant, and this is the, kind of the partner lot split request that we're making. Uncle Julio's is this tract, and they have leases for Firebirds. This is iFly. And so this is going to be restaurants around here, around the lake, and the reason we, and we met with the staff, and the need was to allow us to do lot splits for mortgage tracts. Until they get these leases finalized, it's a lot easier for us to wiggle an administrative lot split line than to come back and have a replat or a plat vacation or whatever. We did agree and committed to the staff that we would come in and do a final plat once these lines settle down. And we have no objection to doing a final plat. It's just, I could just see all the problems that would occur, and that's why we asked to do this with you guys. Track date is undetermined yet what it's going to be. There's, it potentially could be a hotel. But these are all planned to be restaurants. And so this is where that driveway is that we talked about. The rest of the access is taken off of, this is a private street in front of Cabello's. This is a public street on E Avenue. All access will be taken off of those two streets, and we agree no access on Memorial.
And this item was also continued because of the lack of votes for our variance, okay? Does anybody else in the audience want to be heard on this matter today? Commissioners?
Would there be any reason that this would specifically relate to the traffic issue from before? I mean, I don't see anything, but I just want to make sure.
Not necessarily. I think once this fully develops, with the accesses onto the major streets, it'll relieve traffic on that one driveway. You'll have less traffic on that driveway.
All right. I don't have a question.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
I asked if I had a motion.
Oh, we've got a variance on this one, too. A motion to approve the variance.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the variance on item number 17. Do you cast your votes, please? Variance is approved. Do you have a motion on the item?
Motion to approve the application.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 17. Do you cast your votes?
Thank you.
It is approved.
Item number 18 is SN 086. It's a name change proposal for Northeast 69th Street, a portion of that, to change to William at W Sims Way.
Good afternoon. On behalf of Wildwood Christian Church, we're requesting a name change for the street.
Excuse me, madam, sorry. Would you pull the microphone down just a little bit so I can hear you better? Give us your name and address for the record.
Jackullen Bass. My address.
Your address, yes.
6212 Brookside Drive, Oklahoma City.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, we're here on behalf of Wildwood Christian Church, and we're asking for a street change for the street that is on the property that the church owns. We're requesting a street name change.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I'm Stanley Evans. I'm an elder to church. My address is 4108 North Harvey Parkway here in Oklahoma City. We're represented at, by myself. We're also represented by the chairman of the church and also one of our trustees, Mr. Leroy Richardson in the back. What we're asking for is a resolution change, name the street from 69th Street, extending from Kelly Avenue to Everest, to change it to William Sims Way. We want to do this to memorialize Reverend Sims in the neighborhood and in our community and in Oklahoma City. He spent 45 years as the pastor of this church. He is also the founder of this church. This church has had three different locations and five different buildings in the 45-year period. He is also a community leader here within Oklahoma City and been one of the former chairs of one of our major ministerial groups. He's also worked for the VA as a chaplain here in Oklahoma City metropolitan area. This project has met staff recommendations. We've went out and received neighborhood approval. It's a very straightforward project, and unless there are questions, that concludes our presentation.
Is there anybody else in the audience who wants to be heard on this matter today? Commissioners?
Are you on the property to the, or does the church on the property to the north?
Yes, sir. We're on the property on both sides.
Doesn't affect anybody except the church, as far as the, the street, actually, the street name change does not affect anybody except the church?
It doesn't, it doesn't affect anyone except the church, but in, we went ahead and got approval from the people that live in the next block where the street ends anyway. But we're only looking for the street that affects the church. We're on both blocks.
You know, it's pretty much been the process of the planning commission to keep things going east and west as numbered streets and north and south as named streets. But I'm a little bit concerned with that, but under the circumstance, I really don't think it would be that big of a problem, being you have both sides. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the change.
Second motion.
I have a motion.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure, of course.
Based on the staff report, it's, it just read like staff might have some concerns, so I didn't know if there was a staff person that could speak to this in any way, might be helpful.
I might be able to do that. I think that the concerns were that the numbered streets that go east and west, if you look on the other side of Kelly, are a little out of alignment. So if you're traveling Northeast 69th Street and you jump up a couple of blocks, it picks back up to Northeast 69th, which would now be a different name. So it isolates a little block of Northeast 69th to the east. So that was our concern, is that if anyone were trying to find an address on Northeast 69th Street, they wouldn't see where to turn to the right necessarily. But it's those homes located there that the staff comment was made from, if that answers your question.
Pastor Sims has served honorably in our community, outstanding leader in our community, and really has served this congregation as the founding pastor and only pastor for 45 years, and just upstanding, outstanding leader in our community. And so I joyfully second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 18. Do you cast your votes, please?
I just have a comment before we vote, and that being, if you accept the maintenance of that, understand that you also accept the maintenance of that street to include drainage and curbing and asphalt.
No, 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 that's not, we're not privatizing the street. It'll still be a public street. We're just changing the name of it.
Okay, so the city would continue the maintenance of the street?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Do you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you very much, committee. I'm a counsel.
Item number 19 is PCT 10505 to rezone 3800 South MacArthur Boulevard from I-1 to I-2.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, on behalf of the applicant. We, the zoning case for you today is converting the existing property, and there's actually an existing building currently on the property, which your aerial is a little bit outdated in your packet. That actually shows the building on the property that's currently there. The, but we're asking for a I-2 zoning. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan, and it's in conformance with the comprehensive plan, it's consistent with the adjacent zonings in a bus I-2. And the applicant has had multiple tenants that have came and wanted to lease this building and had been unable to do so because of fleet parking outside or something of that nature which I-2, which I-2 would allow. Signage is the same from I-1 to I-2. Landscaping is the same from I-1 to I-2. We actually removed a non-conforming billboard during the construction of the building that's on the side, and there are no billboards that can be put on there because of the spacing between the existing boards that are to the north and east. My client owns both of those properties.
You get extra credit points for that.
So I would ask for your approval.
I would note for the commissioners that the, they're an old TEs. Is there anybody present who wants to be heard on this matter? Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 19. Do you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
It is approved without Pastor Cooper's vote.
Item number 20 is PUD 1652 to rezone 1001 South Mustang Road from R-1 and R-3M to PUD 1652.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, also with me is Jason Spencer, the civil engineer for this project. What's before you is a PUD that would take land of zone both R-1 and R-3M to a PUD that has a base of R-1 but allows 4,000 square foot lots. This is an area of the city that is a planning commission. You have seen numerous applications. You might remember to the east of Mustang was the large 200-acre PUD that included a significant amount of commercial zoning. North of 1628, there are apartments. What this represents is a trend in the market. More and more people want a little bit bigger home on a smaller lot with less maintenance. A lot of empty nesters, a lot of military folks prefer this, and so my client is just trying to put product out there that is consistent with, with that. We do agree with the TE, and be happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions, and I, sorry, I haven't double-checked my TE, perhaps they answer it, but there seems to be some confusion in the staff report between the landscaping requirement, the number of trees, if your garage extends beyond the front wall. What are we going to do about that?
I believe it's just a typical co-provision, but let me have Jason address that.
And I had a question about whether the length of the driveways that you're contemplating would, will permit parking without them over-parking the sidewalks. Have we got enough room to park in the driveway without parking on the sidewalk?
Yes. Well, we've got a 20-foot setback, and we think that's going to be adequate for the houses. Some of the houses will have a garage attached to the house. And for the garages, the garage that extends beyond the front wall of the dwelling is required to have the two 1-1/2-inch caliper trees or one 3-inch caliper tree in the front yard or between the sidewalks and street curbing, and that's in section 9.13.1 of the PUD.
Okay. Is there anybody here who wishes to be heard on this item? Oh, there are people who wish to be heard on this item. I know the answer to that question. Steve, is it Yankley, Yeekly? Would you come down, please? Give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Steve Yakeley. I live at 720 West Ridge Drive. It's a UConn address, but it's in, it's north of Track 3 on the map. The, it's unclear how they plan their street access for, and particularly what I'm concerned about is Track 3, but also the rest of the addition that they've developed here. The road just, it may be hard to see, but on the northeast edge of Track 3 is West Ridge Drive that I live on. It's currently a dead-end street. When they first started developing this to the south, they tried to get our street open and we were successful in keeping it closed. I want it to remain that way because the main access for their addition is going on to Mustang Road. The traffic is very bad anymore and they'll have to turn left on Mustang to go to downtown Oklahoma City, go to work. So I'm mainly concerned about the traffic influx, the negative impact it'll have on our home values. People live on West Ridge Drive. There's also a lot of traffic. Ours is the main feeder street for our addition. And you can see how densely developed it is. And if they're funneling through that, it'll make it harder to get out on West Ridge onto Reno. And there's no stoplight there either. So it's already an issue. It'll be worse. So if nothing else, I'd like them to address what they plan to do on there.
Typically, that is a discussion we would have at the plating stage as opposed to the zoning stage. But I will tell you that it is our policy to encourage connectivity. So that's definitely something you're gonna wanna keep track of and come back and talk to us about because we'll probably be telling them they need to connect to your street.
Okay. Well, they, they allowed it before, but anyway. All right, thanks.
Is there, Richard?
I was gonna ask the same question. He showed up, so I didn't have to.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Would you like to speak to the connectivity issue today, or shall we?
Well, the plat's the next item.
Okay. Oh, it is, okay. I wasn't making that connection. No pun intended.
David?
Yes, sir.
There's not enough picture here to see where the egress and ingress on that addition to the north there.
Where'd they come out?
And one of the concerns that I have is that West Ridge runs right down into the, your proposed subdivision. And apparently that was, was gonna be a connection there. So that we, is that not the case?
What we have in our plat, we've got it shown as an emergency access with a crash gate. It's my understanding that that perhaps may have been an agreement from some past actions in which there was some conflict. I'm not sure that my client has a big desire one way or the other on the issue, but on the plat, as it's before you now, it's shown as a.
Okay, so there, the way I see it here, real small, so there is access there for a crash gate?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's 20 feet wide. If you can see the gray line right here.
Okay.
So that may be more of a question that we all need to grapple with in terms of our own policies on connectivity and whether there are, you know, strong feelings, emergency services, staff generally on that issue. Are there people who would like to be heard on that subject? No? Okay.
That's gonna be part of the plat discussion, right?
It will.
Probably within the vest.
Yes. But since we're talking about it, I thought I'd ask.
I'll be up here either way, so.
As you said, I would prefer connectivity. That seems like, I wouldn't call that connectivity between the neighborhoods. I also understand the concerns of those that spoke, that they would prefer to not have the connectivity, but it's the stance of the city, as you already stated, so.
There are, there are major traffic issues regarding Mustang Road, Morgan Road, 15th, 29th, the 44th, many of which will be addressed in the upcoming bond election. Some, some are going to help this particular area and some will not. But having said that, I would make a motion that we approve this application.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second to approve?
Second.
Item number 20, the rezoning request.
Second.
Do you cast your votes, please? It's approved.
And then item number 21 is the associated preliminary plat, KC 6921, preliminary plat of Sycamore Estates.
Again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Jason Spencer with Creftland Toll with me as the civil engineer. This is the preliminary plat. We do agree with all the technical evaluations and we leave it to the sound discretion of this learned body on the connection issue.
I'll tell you just honestly, I think that our, our policy with respect to connectivity really is one that we hold pretty strongly. I mean, unless there is some specific reason, and generally that relates to topography or, you know, just virtual impossibility of connection, the, I certainly understand that West Ridge Drive looks like a racetrack and I can understand that there might be some concern about that connection. But it would be my preference, certainly, that we stand by our policy on connectivity. I was a hard one convert to the concept, but having adopted it, I think, I think, you know, it is a policy that needs to be applied even-handedly. Anybody else?
I agree.
So, do I have a motion?
Do, would, would our motion be that approval on?
You'd add a TE.
Right. With, I don't, I don't even know how to word that. Approval under the condition that we connect with a full drive to West Ridge?
We can add a TE. Sorry, Ms. Power.
I'm sorry. Just in, in all good conscience, I'd like to invite Mr. Yakeley and Mr. Pierceau to come forward. Well, we're actually now about to do what you don't want us to do, so I think you should have a chance to talk us out of it. It's been our longstanding policy to require the connectivity between neighborhoods. It has to do with, you know, the ability of people to get where they're going without having to get in their cars and go out onto section line roads and come back into neighborhoods. And so it is a thing that promotes, we think, better planning, so give it your best shot.
I guess I should've kept my mouth shut.
No, no, not at all. But, you know, we totally understand that there are many, many neighborhoods in Oklahoma City for which this policy creates everyday problems. So we're happy to have you here and to listen to what you have to say.
Well, I've said what I have to say. I don't know anything else I'd say would make any difference at this point, so.
Well, our, our biggest concern would be the.
Go ahead.
Give me your name and address for the record.
Richard Pierceau, 737 West Ridge Drive.
Thank you.
Our biggest concern isn't so much the connectivity of it. It's that anybody that wants to make a right out of, or coming out of Sycamore and going back onto Interstate 40, all the traffic from Sycamore will be funneled through our addition, through West Ridge. And anybody that's coming out of West Ridge that wants to make a left, well, it'll be a baggage onto our street. It'll be a problem access for the buses getting in and out of there. So won't be just the fact of, of them coming down through or the addition there itself, it'll be the Sycamore addition because right now they have no access to go left. They're having to cross Mustang Road, which is four lanes. And there's no, no real good way for them to, you know, get out in the, in the heavy traffic at that point. If they were to put a light at, I believe it's 11th Street, where it comes out onto Mustang Road, then that would alleviate a lot of the problems in the fact that they could come out and make the left out of Sycamore. And then it wouldn't have the same effect on the addition as the flow of traffic coming in and out.
We already have three areas over West Ridge between our house and Reno where kids lay on the bus and get on the bus there and then back up. So there's a safety issue as well.
It seems like, the other concern we have is this, the, from where that point is in, at Sycamore, right there, where it's dead-ended right now, it's almost a half mile or probably a quarter mile of pure straightaway. And, you know, it's, it's an access point because people are rushing to get down there to get to the off-streets already. So it is a problem already with the traffic flow.
My comment is just that it seems like the Sycamore development is already such a maze itself. And their, their one major point of access, frankly, seems like it would be much more convenient to them rather than going through your neighborhood. I would be more concerned that people from your neighborhood, well, no, I wouldn't even be concerned about that.
I mean, ours, our, our biggest problem is people getting out of the addition from Sycamore right now. I mean, they're, you know, I know of people that are looking for a way, you know, they're, they're hoping for that to go through just so they have a place to go and go right. Right now, there's just not a good, there's not really good access for them to go to I-40.
It's hard to tell from the plan we live there, so we know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners?
I'd still prefer the connectivity. I have no idea how to put the TE.
So you're making a motion that we approve the item with an additional TE requiring connectivity to the north?
That's it. I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do you cast your votes, please? To approve item 21 with the additional TE. And it is approved.
Thank you.
Item 22 is PUD 1650 to rezone 645 Northeast 63rd Street from R-1 to PUD 1650.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. On behalf of the applicant, also with me is Ms. Janine South, who is with the Green Shoe Foundation. This, for some of you, is gonna be, look familiar. We came through with an O-1 application in July. And through that application, we had a series of neighborhood meetings with the folks that surround us to the east, then the north, and the west. One of the big concerns they had was the ability of my client to preserve trees. Frankly, my client wants this site because of the tree cover that's out there. They had some timing constraints with their contract in needing to close. So if you'll remember, what we did was we moved forward with the O-1 application. It was recommended for approval by the planning commission in July. It will go to city council next Tuesday. Our commitment to the neighbors was we'd also file a PUD that would put in place all the agreements that we had regarding tree coverage and uses and all of those things. So what you're asked to do today is recommend approval of the PUD that will then go to council sometime in October, that will replace the O-1 zoning in October. I, I'm not sure I see any of the neighbors that, that we worked with, but after we drafted the PUD, there were several revisions, working back and forth. And I think what we have now is a PUD that not only satisfies my client, but fully satisfies all the neighbors, that our commitments will be adhered to and we'll be able to operate as good neighbors and keep the, the beauty of this area preserved. We do agree with the one TE. Be happy to answer any questions. And I do need to note, Dr. Cooper asked if we could modify the height of our signage. We are willing to do that, so perhaps we need to add a TE to limit the maximum height of our signage to six feet.
I do have someone signed up to speak. Is there a, Katrina, is it Sadawite? Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Katrina Sadawite Walter, representing, representing my mom, Queen Sadawite, at 6309 Canyon Drive. She lives actually south and south of the property in question. So we didn't, we weren't at any of those meetings. So my question today is, we understand that there's a, we're tracking on a proposed medical facility or office. Is it a mental health facility? And if they could please give us details. Like I said, she lives south of the property, so we didn't know anything about.
So the, the use, frankly, the municipal code does not have a use unit that fits squarely with what we wanna do. It, it's not a mental health use like you might think that might be scary. There are no people that are here that are court-ordered. This is not a crisis center. This is a five-day, one-week kind of relationship-building boot camp that they have. No more than five members to each group. But the, the thing we were faced with was there's not a use unit in the code that we could really put this into. So it is not a, a forced mental health facility. It's not a, a mental health facility in terms of an institutional type of use. This is more of a, like I said, a week-long relationship-building course that you might have.
Operating mostly in the daytime.
Yes, sir. And Monday through Friday.
Pastor Cooper and I have worked very closely with the applicant on this and with the neighbors, who were very gracious and, and hosted us twice to help work through some of the details. We came up with this kind of strange hybrid zoning and rezoning all in one package to overlap and overlay. I do believe that most all of the concerns and questions of the neighbors have been addressed and answered. And I wanna thank Commissioner Cooper for the time that he's put in on this, so. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, before I make the motion, I would like to just thank all of the residents in the area as well as Mr. Box for, and, and the applicant for really working through all of the concerns that were expressed and even given the fact that they were not really attracting business, that they were willing to kind of reduce the sign. And there was one additional thing, I think, that maybe staff was requesting, and that was the curb cut. And it really would require an additional curb cut and removal of trees if they moved that from what it is. They wanna use the existing one that is there now and possibly just widening, widen it rather than having removal of the trees, which is what we're trying to keep from doing in the first place. And so with the additional reduction in the signage, I would joyfully and happily move for adoption.
Second.
And I would like to, to second Commissioner Cooper's comments. The applicant has been really extraordinarily cooperative and agreeable with respect to the issues that were raised and finding kind of unique solutions to the problems that were, I wouldn't say problems, I would say concerns that were voiced. So I have a motion and a second to approve item number 22 with the addition of a TE limiting the sign's height to six feet. Do you cast your votes, please? And it is approved.
We continue to item 23 to 9, September 14. So item 24 is SPOUD 994 to rezone 3309 Southeast 59th Street from R-1 to SPOUD 994.
Clint Maynard, 2801 Little Pond Road. I'm a rookie, so I don't know what to do.
Tell us, tell us what you're here for.
I wanna rezone my property on 59th Street to, from R-1 to I-2 so we can. Um, I want to rezone my property on 59th Street to, uh, from R1 to I-2 so we can, uh, fi- um, finish our welding shop over there. We do steel fabrication.
Is this an existing business? It's been operating?
Yes, that's correct.
Or somehow you've caught your toe in something and?
Right.
Now you're here with us? Is there anybody here who wants to be heard on this item? Um, I have a note to myself about hard surface paving requirements. Um, have you seen, have you seen the staff report? Have you seen the technical evaluations?
No, I have not.
Okay, here, come and get mine. Can I have yours?
I'll give you mine.
Oh, okay, here. Um, there's only, staff is recommending only one access drive be permitted along Southeast 29th, that sidewalks will be installed.
Okay.
And, um, single-family residential must be included as a permitted use. Are you okay with all that?
Yes.
Commissioners?
You know, I, I have a problem with the sidewalks. You know, he's gonna put sidewalks on front of his, his property, and I know it's, it's the policy, but it's the sidewalk to no end. I mean, it, there's, doesn't go anyplace, neither end of it. And I don't know, I, I wish there was a way that we could, you know, maybe make a, um, some kind of, um, commitment from him to, to pay for the sidewalks, maybe in the future sometime when there's sidewalks put, put in and they're meaningful. But, I mean, now they're, they're not. So, but, and I know it's a policy, but I, I'm just on my soapbox a little bit, so I'm gonna ma- make a motion to approve the application.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second motion.
No, no. I have a motion and a second to approve item number 24. You cast your votes, please. It's approved.
Thank you for your time.
Item 25 is SPOUD 993 to rezone 727 North Council Road from R4 to SPOUD 993.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Reel, Michael Lee Reel, as it is on the paperwork. We are proposing to have this piece of property changed from R4 to SPOUD 993.
That's it? That's all you're gonna tell us?
Sorry, this is my first attempt at this, so.
Say it's to allow for a storage building to be erected on the property?
This is just going to be one building, ma'am. It is a 40 by 60. Uh, we have looked over the information on building regulations within this, this code. It would be a 70% masonry stone or rock, and none, it is going to be a metal-constructed building, but there will be none of the sheet metal showing from the outs- outside. And it is, it's personal storage, it's not a commercial venture having people renting space for them.
I see. The only question I had on my staff report had to do with signage. Are we putting up signs?
No, ma'am.
No signs? I like the sound of that.
The only thing I may put up is a sign on the fence saying private drive.
Is there anybody else here today who wants to be heard on this matter? Commissioners, do I have comments or concerns?
Um, I can't remember. I talked to a few applicants this week, and I just wanted to check. Um, on, uh, on the ESAs, the environmental, environmentally sensitive areas, you are in a highly vulnerable aquifer area, and so, um, our comprehensive plan recommends that we, uh, we attempt low-impact development in those areas that would allow stormwater to get into the ground. Um, so ba- basically, um, where we can, we like to provide, um, pervious, uh, materials. So what is the plan for the drive? Is that gonna be a concrete drive?
Sir, we were planning on a concrete drive, yes, if there would be a situation where we're going to have to do improvements to the, the land itself. As far as anything that would look like, and fortunately, I have people in the family that are landscapers and are very, very knowledgeable as to the drainage areas of different properties. Underneath the drive going to the building, sir, we will most certainly not, it wouldn't, in other words, the drive would not dam that up if it required a tin horn underneath it within the property, whatever it would take, we want to make sure that it has proper drainage and it's not going to affect the other property.
Unfortunately, I'm not smart enough to know, uh, what the best practices are on, on these ESAs.
It can be handled in a lot of different ways. On a site like this, there's quite a bit of open space still remaining on a pretty small development footprint. It wouldn't be any different than doing a, a street or a drive to a single-family home or access to a site. So if we see a site that's proposing to pave the entire site and have all impervious paving on the site, we would seek to do other types of things like pervious paving.
So in this situation, the city and staff would be, would feel comfortable?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, my question is related to the actual, uh, building. You said it's gonna be a metal building. Uh, usually, uh, we want, um, uh, that site, whatever the site distance is to the road, for that to be some form of, uh, siding other than metal.
You did say it would.
Absolutely, sir.
You did say it would.
And, um, so tell, tell me a little bit about the exterior.
Sir, the, if I understand correctly, uh, it is supposed to be the exterior of the building at least 70% masonry or stone. We are planning on brick going up at probably higher than a portion of 70%. This building, and I'm sure you've seen numerous buildings out there, instead of putting skylights in the roof, they're now actually putting them under the eve, following along the edge of the building. They're not nearly as susceptible to weather damage as the ones in the roof itself, and it actually provides quite a bit more natural light within the building. So that's another portion of what you would see from the, the curb.
But you did indicate that the, the metal will not be visible.
That is correct, ma'am. From our understanding, the, it is allowable within this to have a metal roof, but for the exterior of the building, other than the roof, no, ma'am, you would not see metal.
Commissioners, do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 25. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you for your time.
Item 26 is case SPOUD 996 to rezone 3730 Northwest 166th Street from PUD 1532 to SPOUD 996.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates here. On behalf of the applicant, uh, a little background on this site. This was part of a PUD that, uh, our firm did for the Port 164 project that is developing in this area. At the time we made that application, we had two letters of authorization from two different developers that covered the entire tract of land. We didn't, I mean, that was two years ago, and we didn't find out until a few months ago that the owner of the remaining land, uh, was not aware that this tract was in that zoning case. So the previous zoning where this tract is, uh, was mostly I-1. Um, so, uh, at his request, we've come back, uh, and we're asking for, um, this to be permitted as a collision center. And the only reason why the collision center needs the I-1 is because of the paint booth inside the building. Otherwise, it would operate within the current zone. Uh, you're probably familiar with Collision Works. They have a standard building exterior, blue, uh, very attractive buildings, um, and they're coming in all over town. So this is, the, our east line is the, is the future frontage road right away for ODOT. Um, the, there is a insurance office to our west, um, and this is really the leftover land from Portland 64 to the frontage road. Uh, single building. Uh, the only thing that's really unique about this site is we're about, we're nearly 20 feet below the new Portland. Uh, as you go, uh, south on Portland, it rises up to go over 164th Street, so, um, and we'll talk about that in a minute. The, um, staff has recommended approval. Uh, we have two TEs. The second TE deals with the signage. This is their standard sign. Uh, it meets the 100 square feet, and, uh, the only variance that we are asking for is this sign be allowed to be 25 feet high because of our level below the highway. Tried to illustrate this. This is, uh, a current view from, as the highway rises. Uh, our property, where the building is, uh, where the building will be is about 15 feet below the road, and you can see the height of the building would be about equal with the top of that building and about equal with the top of the roof of the building, uh, insurance building to the other side. We're only asking for one sign, and we'd like for that height, just from a visibility standpoint. If you back off, um, further, uh, north, the highway actually berms out. There's, where the frontage road will be more adjacent to the highway, it's a higher level as you go south, as you go north. So this is more of a close-up right where 166th Street would be, and that's 166th Street. You can see how fast it drops down right there. So that's why we're asking for the taller sign. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any question.
Let me ask if there's nobody else here who wants to be heard on this matter today? No? Um, I, do we really need convenience sales and personal services?
Probably not.
Okay. Um, commissioners?
I was just curious about Collision Works', um, business. I mean, so do they have, like, people that just, you know, see the sign and say, oh, I'm gonna go stop at Collision Works?
Well, the, the, the need for the sign is if you're traveling down the highway at 60 to 65 miles an hour, right now you can exit at 166th Street. If they don't see that sign in time, then they have to go past 164th and come back through, and there's no frontage road there now. So they have to drive through private streets, which is Port 164, to get back to that site.
Is it, but I mean, do they have, like, walk-ins? Or is this, or is this, I, I, I know that some of the collision places specifically have deals with, like, mechanics or whatever, yeah, and they'll?
Yeah, they, and I, I've worked with these guys on a couple of sites around town, and they do specialize in walk-ins. People want estimates on their car, they, hey, let's, I'm gonna stop here. Not every deal is an insurance deal. Um, but you're right, probably the majority of their customers are, are appointments.
Well, yeah, just?
But it's, it's a matter of?
Obviously, like, my concern would be, like, do, do they require a sign at all if their business isn't with walk-ins?
It's, it's more of a traffic, being able to see it in time to, to get there.
You know, I don't have a problem with the idea of their sign being visible, and I get the topography is dictating, um, some consideration, some flexibility here. How, how will we ensure that this sign gets put in that place so that it's, it's not a 25-foot sign standing on, you know?
Uh, we can make that a provision of, uh, TE that it be, um, that the base of the sign be at a level near the finished floor of the building.
Okay.
I get you. Yeah, we don't want to build an eight-foot berm and then put a 25-foot sign on it?
Right.
So that's why we're asking for the 25 feet.
Tim, I kind of joined with the other commissioners in questioning the 25-foot sign and whether or not it's really necessary. Uh, maybe an eight-foot sign is not large enough, but 25 feet, given what you've shown us in terms of, uh, site distance, there's nothing else blocking it, it's not competing with anything else that I saw on that particular site, so why do we necessarily need a 25-foot sign?
I think what, I think the, the issue is because the topography of the site is below grade, putting it on, you know, a, an elevation of 25 feet is gonna bring it to, to grade to, and that's why I was saying, you know, where it's placed is, is, is gonna be critical here. And I don't, I don't want 25 feet of sign, but if it's, if it's gonna be down in a, in a gully so that, you know, what, what you're seeing is actually not any taller than what we would approve, I'm okay with that.
Could you hold your, your rendering back up real quick? I, I don't think you specifically said this, but the item there in white is intended to represent the sign. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So the lower, the bottom of the sign is set at the 15-foot mark that you're saying is the top of the street grade?
That's correct.
So you've got, you're gonna have 10 feet above the grade. So if, if, if on the street level you had an eight-foot sign, you're essentially getting two feet higher than that if it were a street-grade sign?
That's correct.
How, what is the closest part of your eastern building line to, uh, you said that you're willing to take the TE subject to the same grade as the building, same floor height, right?
Yes.
What, what would that bring it to, and does that change the edge at all? Does that change our height from street grade?
So here's the building, here's where the sign would be.
Is that where your rendering shows it currently?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why it appears a little bit bigger because it's the front of the building.
Okay.
Um, but it would be here, and, you know, the elevation in this area is gonna be near the finished floor elevation. It may be plus or minus a foot.
And your, your, your commitment to us is that that's 15 feet below the street grade?
Yes.
I, I've driven the site several times while Port 164 was under construction. It is a significant drop in grade there. That's true. Um, and I, I think it's perfectly reasonable for Collision Works, particularly given the type of frontage road that that section of Highway 74 is now and is certainly going to become, to request a sign that would be appropriate for a commercial business of that size. It doesn't, it doesn't strike me as offensive. Um, I, I certainly support your application there.
That sounds like a motion to me.
I would make a, well, you gotta put me on the spot like that. I will make a motion to approve the application, um, subject to the, only the first technical evaluation?
Well, we're gonna, we're going to amend TE2 or replace it with, um, this commitment that the, that the, say it out loud for me, Tim.
The, approving a 25-foot-high sign, that the base of the sign will be no more than a foot above the finished floor.
I make that motion.
And removing convenience sales and personal services, so adding it to.
We'll agree to that.
Friendly amendment, approved. This is what you guys get for coming on New Guy Day, so.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, it, it's not a separately voted-on variance, it's just we are varying the requirement. So I have a motion and a second to approve item number 26 with the additional TE. Would you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
It's approved.
Item 27 is SPOUD 994 to rezone 1001 Northwest 71st Street from I-2 and R1 to SPOUD 997.
Good afternoon, Mr., Madam Chairman, Members of Commission Brian Coon, representing the applicant. Um, I've talked to the Planning Commission Chairman a couple of times on this project. There's a couple of uses that she did not want to see on this property. This is actually, there's a subway on Western. You might kind of familiarize yourself with this. It's between 71st and 71st. 71st Place, 71st Street, vacant property. It's surrounded by industrial metal, industrial buildings, plumbing shop to the north, I think, and a couple of other industrial facilities. You know the area. Uh, this, the guy that designed this for them is the guy that's helping with City Park, did the memorial over here, so it's, he's got some great ideas. You can see it's a great-looking building. Um, two-story, max. Um, one of the things that we have, um, that you probably read in the staff report, we want some on-street parking, and we know we have to go to the Traffic Commission. They did not have time to put it onto the agenda for this week or for this meeting, so we wanted to move forward for you all and with your approval, subject to, we know we still have to get Traffic Commission approval. So, um, So, we're gonna be there. I think it's the first Traffic Commission meeting in September. A couple of things I just wanted to bring up, and when I talked to Ms. Powers about some of the uses. We're gonna eliminate convenience sales and personal service, eating establishments, fast food, eating establishments, sit-down alcohol, not permitted, eating establishments, sit-down alcohol permitted, so we've eliminated those. Now, I talked, when I was talking to her yesterday, we talked about eliminating food and beverage retail sales. I know you had a hard time with that. What I'd like to do, and I don't want you to think I'm coming back around behind you, but they're talking about a, maybe just 20% of the building, just a neighborhood, kinda like there's a store over on May, about 58th, 59th. It's a Greek, I think it's Greek or Mediterranean store, just something like that, just for the neighborhood, a neighborhood market type of thing. It's not gonna be a Whole Foods by any means. This is total of 15,000 square feet, so it'd be something that we would limit it to 20% of the site. Possibly, and I know we're short a little bit of parking, and I know that was your concern, that we don't want a grocery store, and they don't either. But just something like you see down here in the corner of like Second or Third by Urban Johnny's, just a corner, someplace for the neighbors to have the place to shop. And, you know, they can go to Whole Foods from here, they could go to Trader Joe's from here, but just something that, I mean, there's a lot of offices around there. So we'd like to put that back in. I know I told you yesterday we wouldn't, didn't want that.
So what would we do, limit it to 20% of the building area?
Yeah, 20% of the total building.
I'm totally okay with that.
Okay. And one other thing that I'd like to talk about, there's two TEs, we agree with both of them, so get that out of the way. One of the things, and the guys were just talking about, they're doing some pretty neat stuff here in Oklahoma City. They're redoing the building at 5600 Enterprise there on May. Just, it's the big, I can't remember what, it used to be called the, I can't remember what it was called, but anyway, three or four stories. They do some neat stuff. What he was talking about today, we've got eight-foot monument signs, eight-foot max. What he's talking about today is possibly a vintage neon sign if they find something that could look cool. I think about what Packard's has, what the Buick Building has, where Broadway 10 is, something like that, but limited to 30 square feet and just, and a maximum of two of them, if they find. They're doing some pretty, like, they, they're doing some ideas we haven't seen around here. So I'd like to add that if we could in the signage, just limited, just to neon, non-flashing, just neon vintage-type-looking signs. This is probably gonna be oil and gas building, I mean, offices, maybe a dentist, mostly professional offices. But if someone has something that they think, hey, that's pretty cool, we'd like to be able to do that. So, I'm asking for that, and you could add that as a TE, two neon vintage-type signs limited to 30 square feet, which is three by 10. Just a thought.
I'm totally okay with that, too. I'm looking around for JJ. Assuming staff can come up with some language that I like. Oh, there you are, JJ. We can do that, can't we? Okay, I'm all right with that.
Other than that, ask your approval.
Which I would be glad to move if I could, so.
I would like to say that I, I think it's a cool project.
Thank you.
Glad to see it.
Thank you. I thank those guys in the back. I'm just, I'm just representing them, so.
Right on. I'll, I'll move for approval.
With the removal of those various items.
For, for uses.
And limitation of the food and beverage retail sales to 20% of the building.
Yes.
And some language with respect to signage that we're gonna come up with.
Yes.
Yep.
That sounds like the motion he just said.
And it, it, the approval, yeah, they're on their way, but their approval is not really going to impact our decision here.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 27 as amended. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Did we just approve neon signs?
We did. We, we did just approve neon signs.
You said you did approve, right?
Item 28 is S P U D 1001 to rezone 1225 Northwest 38th Street from R-1 to S P U D 1001.
Good afternoon again. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates here on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Jason Little is here as well. A lot of you will remember the, well, there's a lot of new faces. You won't remember the rezoning on Bradford House. But we're converting this building at the, at the corner of 38th and Classen into a boutique hotel. This case, however, is the property adjacent to the east. And what this application will do, Mr. Little has been able to acquire that property and intends to leave it at this time as a, it's currently an R2 use in an R1 zoning. So this application will bring the existing duplex into conformance, and then it will allow us to utilize the north, 40% of this lot as the additional parking needed to meet full parking criteria for the boutique hotel without being required to use any off-site parking. And that still gives the R2 building a pretty significant backyard and provides for parking for them as well. We are going into extra efforts to save a very large tree in the back. We had an arborist come in and work with us. It came up with some paving uses that we can work around that tree to allow for, to salvage that tree roots. So going to all kinds of efforts to really save that tree and then provide the additional I don't think we have any TEs. We don't. Be happy to answer any questions.
And for those of you who have not been along for the ride, this is, this is just a remarkable little redevelopment of a piece of property that's been sitting sort of neglected and deteriorating for a long, long time. It's been really well-designed and planned, and, and I'm very much on board with this application. Your staff report refers to the possibility of conversion of the duplex. We're, we're removing those portions of the application because, because the project has been so well-planned and designed. And if, if that ever comes about, then we'll deal with it then. So I would be really happy to move this if I could, so can I have a motion?
I, I agree. I think it's a really cool project as well, and.
I'm sorry, I should ask, is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this? I, we've, we've been through this with the neighbors. I didn't imagine that there would be, but I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 28. Would you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
It is approved.
Items 29 and 30 were continued. Item 31 is P U D 1642 to rezone 6001 South Peabody Road from AA to P U D 1642.
My name is Sarapure. I'm here to requesting rezoning of a seven-and-a-half-acre piece of property on corner of 59th and Peabody Road to be zoned for C3 for building some retail outfit out there. I've met with some of the neighbors. I've heard their concern about this project. Some of the concern has been addressed such as shrinking the size of the project, extending the natural topography, the same, do not remove trees, we agreed on that. And out of the 10 people I had to notify the neighbors, which most of them are here today, there are about five of them are for the project and five are against the project.
Well, we'll let them speak for themselves. What, you say you've shrunk the size of the project? Do you mean that the documents that we have do not reflect accurately the application or?
Yes, some of them we updated lately, some of them were updated beforehand.
So will you walk us through that? Can you explain to us how the application has actually changed?
Yes, we got some literature here. We're gonna pass it out to you all so you can see it.
For the members of the commission who are relatively new, I will just let you know that this is an item, I guess probably staff report reflects this. This is, we saw a zoning case on this corner, was it two years ago, Jim?
Correct. About two and a half years ago, Dollar General Store contacted me, wanted to purchase two and a half acre to build a Dollar General. And I told them the zoning requires either I sell the whole seven-and-a-half acre, and they suggested they would go ahead, change the zoning, and they only purchased two and a half. And they worked on it for quite a bit of time, and due to the opposition of the neighbors, they decided to redraw the contract. But at this time, I've studied this project myself, and I decided to go ahead to continue on the plan and get it rezoned.
I would note also that the staff report indicates that rural low use, rural low areas are predominantly composed of residential uses but may support commercial and light industrial uses provided that they do not negatively impact rural residential character. On the other hand, the staff report also indicates that this particular proposal comprises possibly seven acres of commercial development and is inconsistent with the scale of the rural area, would detract from the character. So.
Well, if I may speak, about 700, 800 feet east of this location, I operated New Olive Gas and Grill for 25 years. This is 1982, I purchased that, and I operated that store for 25 years. I had a Napa Auto Parts store, I had S&amp;S feet, I had hamburgers, hot dogs, groceries, gas, I had Conoco gas station. So only a few feet from this corner. And of course, at the time when Dollar General was interested, there was no talk of the turnpike. And since then, the turnpike issue has come to a finalization where only a few yards from this corner, the turnpike is gonna go through. And as far.
But there won't, there won't be an exit onto this road, will there?
No, the exit would be on I-40, and I-40 has an exit on Peabody Road. This Peabody Road exit is the very first exit off I-40 when the turnpike connects to I-40. And 59th Street is a snow route. Like I said, since 82, I had that store there, and it's a busy, busy street. Everybody uses it, and it's a snow route, and it's a major junction that 59th is. And when I met with the neighbors, and their concern was they don't wanna see the metal buildings and this and that, of course, there is no metal buildings. I presented some elevation of the buildings. They're good-looking, nice-looking buildings, top shape, the one that you see at North Side of Town all the time. Very reputable people are working on that. And 200, 120, 140 feet from each side of the buildings to the next-door neighbor's yard gonna be untouched. They will not see anything because the trees. I was gonna cha, put some green space there in a park setting, but since the neighbors didn't want to, we changed that to do not touch the 120-feet buffer zone between each property owners and the buildings.
Okay. And Commissioners, do you have any questions of our applicant?
I got a couple of questions. Mo?
Yes, sir.
In our conversations, I mentioned to you that one thing I wanted to see if this application was approved was all three buildings on the property built.
Correct.
And then I wanted to see some elevations that would be an asset to that area.
Yes, sir.
Of which you showed some. But I'm looking at the information that we've got in our packet, and you're showing a Dollar General that looks like a box. I'm, I'm, I don't understand.
Hmm. Well, maybe you're looking at the original blueprint presented by Dollar General. At the time, Petrus Group was representing them, and they had that typical Dollar General store design. But since I'm doing this project, the building looked totally different. They're breaking stone in the front, and you've seen the picture that we presented.
And you're gonna build three buildings, not just one?
We were gonna do three buildings, but one of the city recommendations, staff recommendation, was to delete Building B, which we've discussed that, and we're kinda looking at it to comply with the city staff recommendation on that part.
So what you're telling me, am I understanding what you're saying? You're gonna build one building, and if everything goes good, 10 years from now, you're gonna build another building?
No, sir, no, sir, no.
Okay. Are you gonna do all three buildings at the same time?
I have the capability to do all the three buildings at the same time.
Okay. Okay, just so we're, I know exactly where we stand on this.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Is, is there a way that the city can even, I mean, is there any controls in place for something like that?
I'm sorry?
Is there any way for the city to control when things are constructed?
It's in a planned unit development, so yes.
Okay.
There's certain things that we can control, yes.
I met with the neighbor on the southeast corner last night. I was at his house. He signed a letter, gave it to me. He said he's gonna be here, and he is 100% for it. Another lady at 6404 South Peabody Road. I went to her house, met with her husband, sat down, and she also is 100% agreeable. Mr. Larry Buchanan was here a few minutes ago. He just stepped outside. He lives at 6701 South Peabody Road, which is the third house from the corner. He's 100% agreeable with it.
If you have letters of support, would you provide those to?
Sure.
Staff, please. I have a number of people signed up to speak here today.
One, one quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Do you have, so, do you have commitments from people to occupy these buildings?
Except Dollar General Store, no. But we have, me and my brother, we have built several shopping centers on Sooner Road and 59th, Sooner Road, 89th, Midwest Boulevard in Reno, and we have from 24-hour gym in there to Pizza Hut, Subway sandwiches, Chinese restaurant, and health stores, and those kind of barber shops, insurance office, dry cleaners. So all kinds of low-impact, good-quality retail. As I mentioned, in 1982, I purchased that property, which is a few hundred feet from this location, and I operated that store for 25 years. It was a bankrupt business when I took it over, but eventually I brought it to where it was branded, gas station, Conoco gas station. I put a Napa Auto Parts store, one of the fastest-growing Napa store at the time was there. I had S&amp;S feet, hardware, trustworthy hardware store franchise.
Sir.
And it made the country, more country for people because they could stay and enjoy the homes, but having all the conveniences of needing something to repair their plumings or feed for their animals and things like that.
Sir, I'm gonna try to keep us focused on what we're here to decide today.
Yes.
And I have.
My question.
Please, go ahead.
My question, my question is related to what is, what is your goal for tree preservation on this particular site, given that it's 100%, really 100% upland forest?
She can answer, someone who's taken a question for you.
I'm Lydia Leslie. I'm with Kimlinghorn Engineers. I'm helping represent Mr. [inaudible]. This current site plan was reduced from the original site plan as far as the layout goes. We've tried to comply with leaving, 50% of it is developed and 50% of it is green space. So Mo has shrunk his building size from the original intent that he had, and we have a 7,500 square foot, 7,500 and 9,500 square foot, as represented on your sheet there. We've increased the landscape buffer as well, the setback is, landscape buffer is, the actual setback line for the landscape has tripled, and the setback building line has doubled in what the city normal requirements are. You know, the other things that. You know, the other things that Mo spoke to that were revised, where the building facade, as he's talked about, the fencing, he wants to put in a very nice fence for the neighbors as well, and just provide a less disruptive site plan to them. You know, as far as the engineering aspects that some of the neighbors will speak to, our intent is to comply with any city standards that we need to, and we'll be going through that review process with the city. At the time comes when we go through our engineering plans and have a proper survey, we can, you know, look through some of those issues for the city standards.
So, tree preservation is how much, what percentage?
50% of the trees are being kept, and 50% is being developed. And all the trees that are being disturbed in this area, I mean, where we can plant, we'll be replanting. And so, anywhere that's disturbed, you know, in these areas, we intend to replant trees. If we had to do any kind of construction, we replant those areas.
Does that account for the septic systems being installed on the site?
Yes, ma'am. So, any of the septic area, because this is on well water and septic area, so anything that we'd have to do for septic, if we have to come in there and do construction, Mo would be replacing those trees.
And where would that septic be proposed?
We haven't, we haven't had the survey to delineate exactly where we're going to put all of that information, so that would come at a later time. And also, doing the-
So, you would lose then the tree area for that, right? Tree preservation area for the septic, right?
Say, I'm sorry, excuse me, say that again.
You'll lose the tree preservation area that you're currently stating. You're going to lose that whenever you put in the septic.
We will be replanting if there's anything that has to happen for construction during the construction phase. If there are trees that are eliminated, they would be replaced. They would be replaced.
Tree, for tree, we are-
Yes.
Some area will have some grass where the septic ladder lines are, but we'll be planting some more trees in that area.
Anybody else? I have a bunch of people that want to be heard on this matter. I'm just going to go through them in order. Can I suggest to you, this is, this is, you know, going to be a lengthy-
Is that Chris?
Chris, uh-huh.
Yeah.
Can I, can I suggest that as we go through these, if you have somebody that you want to speak on your behalf-
Yes.
That, that's fine, and we'll have those people come up. Try not to be repetitive of what's already been stated. There are a lot of people that want to be heard. We want to hear all of you, so, but kind of confine your remarks, be a little thoughtful about the fact that it's 3:30 almost, and we're about to lose one of our commissioners. I'd really like to vote on this before he has to leave, so.
I'd like you to vote.
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for having me today. My name is Paul Crouch, 4480 Sundance Lane, New Walla, Oklahoma. Something that I couldn't help but overhear while I sit in the audience is that the applicant kept saying the neighbors didn't want it. The neighbors didn't want it. And I heard him say that probably five times. We didn't do that because the neighbors didn't want it. So, it's not there. So, what I want to tell you is this. Local governments, they use zoning to protect the health and safety of the community, right? They do that. Zoning ordinances and land regulations control the use of the property. So, the property in question is zoned agricultural. So, this defined as an area set aside for farming activities. Very obviously, when you drive through this part where this proposal is, you're going to see that the property in question is definitely agricultural. There's no question. All you see is pasture and trees. That's it. And for good reason. People all around this area, they raise cattle, they raise horses, they raise chickens, they raise pigs, they raise animals, they bale hay to feed these animals. It's agricultural, it's farming area. There's a vineyard just a few hundred feet to the west of this proposed site, a vineyard. And all the property in the vicinity of this area is either wooded or it's pasture, and that's the reason it's zoned agricultural. So, one of the main reasons the area is zoned agricultural by local jurisdiction is protect the farmlands and the farming activities from incompatible non-farm uses such as a Dollar General store and associated buildings. Some typical examples of agricultural farming activities include planting and harvesting crops from fields, applying natural fertilizers, handpicking crops, milking cows, driving trucks, driving diesel trucks, driving farm tractors, all those things that you picture in your mind as being farm activity, that's what happens at this intersection that the applicant's talking about. So, all and even more of these activities take place in this area, and for good reason. I don't envision a convenience store as being a good backdrop for this farming community. It just doesn't fit. It just doesn't fit. So, a good rule of thumb to remember is if you're going to find a piece of vacant land that seems ideal for your bright idea, but you later find out that it's zoned for agricultural use and cannot be used, then you may be stuck with a bare piece of property that has no potential. If you buy a piece of vacant land already aware that it's zoned agricultural, then you knew there was a great potential that people would protest commercial use, and that's why we're here today, is to protest that. So, besides being zoned agricultural property, this is also a big safety issue for the people who live there. It's a rural area. The proposed location for this project, commercial venture, if you will, is at a small four-way intersection at 59th and Peabody. And it's on a hill. When you come over, when you're headed south to north, you come over a hill, and you have a very short distance to be able to stop at this stop sign. I've witnessed three wrecks at this intersection, and I haven't lived out there but three and a half years. Three wrecks. So, this is a, definitely a safety issue. There are no traffic lines, and this would cause more traffic congestion in that small area, and it's just not ready for it. It's still country. That's what it is. So additionally, just a couple of months ago, I'll share this with you. The acting Oklahoma County Sheriff, P.D. Taylor, set a meeting and came out at the volunteer fire department in New Walla to tell all of us residents out there that there were going to be limited to zero patrols from the sheriff's office in this area due to budget cuts, to his budget. That was a big enough concern for us, just as people who live there. And now, the thought of having a commercial business out there with the thought of congested traffic at this place, traffic accidents, crime, stores get robbed, and it does happen. I attended that meeting, and I spoke at that meeting, and I think we already have enough issues in this agriculturally-zoned area without the potential of increased crime and vehicle accidents caused by commercially-developed areas. People who live out here in this zoned area, they do so because they don't want to live in a commercially congested area. We chose to live out here because we like living in the country, not next to a convenience store or a strip mall. We paid good money for our homes, our houses, and our property because we did not want that. City often considers areas blighted if there are buildings that aren't used. We consider this a blight on our property and in our area. So, if somebody wants to build a commercial venture, then they need to go to an area that's already zoned commercial and build it there. Why would you want to push your agenda on somebody that you know came and built a house and a home and barns and silos and things like that to be out in a farming community? Why would you do that knowing that it's going to be protested? And there's no question about it. So, we're asking for your protection today. That's what we're asking. We're country people, and we live out here by choice. We don't want to live in a commercially-developed area. We were here first. And local ordinance were voted on a long time ago to zone this the way it is today, and are still valid, and they must remain upheld. Every person that came here today to protest the rezoning to allow commercial development in an agriculture-zoned area made the conscious choice to live here and were willing to make that sacrifice of that two-to-three mile drive to the next Dollar General on every corner in Choctaw, Hara, and every other area. We're willing to do that. Okay? And I know, I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm sorry, but this is, when you live there, you're very passionate about what happens in your area. And I couldn't help but, but understand when they were talking about the, the septic system, and you, you guys asked that question about the septic system. Every one of us out there are on water wells. Every one of us out there are on, that use these aerator systems that have these ladder lines that run out, and when it sprays, it sprays a real far distance, okay? So, there are people who live in those areas, they don't want that stuff sprayed on their property, they don't want it run off to their property, they don't want it run off into their wells. I will tell you this, and I'll shut up. I'll bet you $100 if I came into downtown Oklahoma City and bought myself a piece of property in right downtown Oklahoma City and cleared it off and said, "I'm raising cattle here," that people would raise cane. They'd say, "No cattle here. This is a commercially-zoned area." And they would cry out, just like we're crying out to you now. This is agriculturally-zoned, and we want it to stay that way, and this project has no business being in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Can I ask, how many, how many of the people here today are here and protest this application? Will you stand up for me? You don't have to stand up. Bless your heart. Okay, thank you. Do any of you have anything else you want to say about this that you think needs to be said? If so, let's do it.
Hello. My name is Valerie Frye, and I live at 6801 South Peabody Road, so I just live down the street from there. I have been out there for 31 years, so I know Mo, I know the shop that he used to have around the corner, and I've seen all of the different progress come in there. So, I just want to state that I'm not opposed to progress on principle, but I am opposed to this spot zoning effort. My issue that I'd like to talk about is safety, a little bit different. I retired Air Force, so many years I've made the trip down before the exit came on, you know, down to Choctaw, get on I-40. Now, I went down Peabody Road to get on I-40. And then my last 11 years, I worked over at Francis Tuttles. So, I drove across town, yeah, 48 miles one way. So, I've seen all of the traffic that's over there. What I don't like is I have seen numerous times where there's been an accident because from Peabody Road to Douglas, so on I-40, you have the exits of Peabody Road, Choctaw Road, Anderson, and then Douglas. And so, everyone that lives out here, they're either going to town, you know, to work downtown Oklahoma City, or they're going to Tinker. There's very, there's, there's a ton of people out there from Tinker. So, as soon as there isn't a wreck on I-40, which happens frequently, it starts backing up, and so people start trying to get off. And there's limited places that they can get off in that 12-mile strips. So, what ends up happening, and I have seen a backed-up pass, you know, Peabody Road on I-40, so they start getting off on Peabody Road, and I have had in the front of my house, you know, 18-wheelers, tons of traffic backed up because of the four-way stop down there on 59th and Peabody that they can't get through, and it's a four-way stop, so it takes a long time for people to try to go left, get down to Choctaw or Anderson. So, I have a serious problem with that. We have done some research, and based on our research, so, right now, there's currently no current plans to expand Peabody Road. And if you go down our road and you look, there is no shoulders. There's no shoulders. And the ditch there, the drainage ditch, some of them are very steep down to two, three, four feet. People can't even mow them, so there's like trees or there's giant boulders in there. So, with all of the increased traffic, it's a safety issue to have put more traffic on our road. The other thing is, is the necessity. Do I need a Dollar General there, and do I need those convenience, whatever he's going to put there? My answer to you is unequivocally no. I either head over to Shawnee or I head into Midwest City. I can go up to get groceries from Country Boy. They're already zoned, they've been there, it's been working. So, I please implore you to not change our rural atmosphere right there at that corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Good afternoon. I am the property owner. I am Glenn Dravis, 17817 Southeast 59th Street.
I'm sorry, say your last name for me.
Glenn Dravis.
Dravis.
I am the property owner of the quadrant that is north of this section, that whole area. I will be affected completely, and that's why I want to address several different issues. One is the drainage. The drainage of this property is currently of natural forest. It has large white oak trees and natural habitat. Currently, that is almost at an engineering estimate of 31% grade of slope, as it all slopes to the north. Currently, that property drains to my property. There is a culvert across that road that it drains completely into my property. As you see, there's a pond on that area. All of this land will drain into my property, thus will create contaminants. As it is today, it's a natural forest. We have to have over a two-inch rainfall to produce water flow levels that increase the flow into my pond. That drainage on both sides flow into the culvert that flows into there, and it has a natural flow that will seep because of the natural forest, will seep the current water flow down. His proposed, excuse me, his current proposed isolation area will have concrete and buildings that will not have a natural flow of water. And by your staff report, it does not say that there will be detention. Detention is required at a certain rate of water flow. I believe it's over 2 gallons per hour to that fact. It is not considered any detention. That's, will not be accepted. Ultimately, as this water does, though, it states that it will go into the standard drainage necessary to install excess capacity that this will produce. While that excess capacity will not be handled by the natural drainage that we currently have there, and thus, it will overflow into the road and creating road hazard, and ultimately flowing over into my property and creating drainage issues into my property. It does say it does, it will exceed the capacity of the current standard ditch form, thus you will need to add concrete structures or concrete floodage. Thus, if it is, it should actually be reconstructed to flow into the natural ditch and not across the culvert into my property, thus changing the way the drainage should sink. So, with that proposed is, again, I propose that the natural habitat remain because of the hazards of the cars, the building, the structures that will be provided, and it's not acceptable to allow that drainage to be flowed onto my property that is natural habitat. The other safety, as she brought up, the safety concern. As the current property sets, as I said, a 31-degree slope that is created from that, and you come rising over the hill, at its current rate, you cannot stop by the stop sign, and as it has turnage proposed on Peabody, that will be impacted greatly. As a person that actually currently mows the area on both road sides, has more than once has had occasion to get hit because of the way that the traffic is flowing through there, and there's no pull-off in the shoulders, and he will not be able to stop for his turnoff at all. Needless to say, that we are mightily opposed. We did have a neighborhood meeting the other night. Forty-seven people did sign and did show up that are fully opposed to this development, not because, as she said, and I say, we're not opposed against development. I am a person that actually does development for Oklahoma, and I very strongly encourage that, but not this site, not this location, because most of our areas, we're within a four-mile of anything we need, Country Boy or anything else, and we're all commuters, we all drive miles to go to work, and it's not a problem to go five more miles and pick up groceries or whatever we are if we're at our current location. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Hi, I'm Kyle Jackson. I live at 17724 Southeast 59th Street. I'm in the house just to the left of the track there. Kyle Jackson. So, I'd like to talk about two concerns. One was brought up before, but my wife and I had just moved there two, three months ago, and the whole reason we moved there was to get away from the city, to be 20 minutes away from everything. And so, in putting that in, I think that would heavily detract from the rural character of the area, and then my wife and I would then need to move somewhere else. And the other concern I'd like to bring up is that I, I'm the one that owns the vineyard that's also right there, and my main concern is contamination with pesticides and herbicides. With herbicides, since grapes are vine, they're very fragile to what many people use in weed control. control. And so, in keeping up with that commercial area, it is very, very easy for whatever they're spraying to drift over onto my property and kill off a portion of my crop. And then, also, I raise chickens, and so, pesticide problem is in there, although not as severe as, as the herbicide problem. But if, if they were to spray pesticides, and my chickens, being free-range, were to come over there and eat insects, then they could get poisoned, and I would lose some that way. That's it. Yeah.
Ron Molder, sixty-eight oh-five South Peabody Road. In your packet, you should have a map that identifies the proponents and the opponents for this. If we could find that, I think the base...
I don't want to interrupt you, I'm sorry, I forgot to put my mic back on.
What's that?
I don't want to interrupt you, but I did want to say that I did find that to be the most compelling part of, of the opposition to this item's presentation that is in the packet.
Okay, so, if we could please find that, I, I take challenge of Mo's...
Is this what you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am, it is. Yes, that's it.
I just wanted to be sure I had it.
Yep. I realize Mo apparently has found some additional parties within the half-mile or mile area, but I think when you see this chart, you will see that overwhelmingly, there is total opposition for this spot rezoning. We try the protesters. Of course, you have a series of letters that were provided either through mailing, emails, calls, so on and so forth. I used Mo's original petition for support, and as I was looking through that originally, I thought, hmm, that's interesting, I don't recognize any of these names. And more ironically enough, I don't recognize any of these locations. So, I took it up on myself to plot all this out, you can keep going. And then, I took the petitions of opposition that we have over the last year or so, specifically the last several months, and I think, even though it's very difficult to see, the green plots are those that Mo's, of Mo's supporters, and the red stars are those of the opponents. And I think you can see, if you possibly could zoom in, in the middle of the slot, okay. There's a yellow dot at the corner of Fifty-Ninth and Peabody, which represents the target spot rezoning area, and I think you can identify, there you go, thank you. The absolute overwhelming opposition for this rezoning, this spot rezoning, based on the individuals that have signed either the electronic petition and/or the written petitions that we have gathered today. We have over two-hundred-and-twenty-eight opposition members, and I think, I don't know what Mo's final tally on his, his proponents are, but I think by almost a twenty-to-one, we, we have the, the opposition. If you notice that up until this morning, there was no support within the half-mile radius, there was one individual, based on his previously provided petition, that would, within a one-mile radius, there are three additional opponents within the mile and a half, but if you look at that corner and that specific rural area, upon itself, I think you can identify the fact that we, as the members in the, in the community and the neighborhood of the Fifty-Ninth and Peabody Road, absolutely, without a doubt, oppose this, oppose this action, so.
Okay, my name is Anetta Lively, and I live across the road, across from the vineyard, the big antique house, and right next door to Glenn, which is on the corner. Okay, we bought our land forty years ago, built on it the next year. We were assured at the time it would never be changed from agriculture. My husband talked to whoever he talked to, which I don't remember now. He's eighty, and I'm seventy-six. Okay, I have two artificial shoulders, two knees, one hip, and a broken back. I beat cancer in the mouth five years ago, and I'm not asking for your sympathy, I'm asking for your health, help. My concern, well, one of my concerns, is that that is so dangerous out there for us old people, and all these other kids are young, younger than we are at least, but his parking lot is going to be not three-hundred feet from our driveway, and all they'd have to do is step out, knock us in the head, and do whatever. So, if it's that dangerous for us, it's got to be that dangerous for anybody else. So, that's my concern, as being an old lady. Thank you. But that's a different perspective.
My name's Allen Burgett. My address is seventeen-three-hundred on Melody Lane, which is about a half a mile, as a crow flies back to the west from this proposal here. I started out, out there nearly thirty years ago, bought five acres. I've got about fifty out there now. I'm a small-time cattle farmer, I'm retired from Oklahoma City Police, and I've dealt, I used to supervise that sector out there, so I'm pretty familiar with a lot of the aspects of that community out there, and I've had family out there for nearly all of my life. At one time, that was part of New Walla, and I'm not so sure where his story is, that was part of New Walla, and then was eventually incorporated in Oklahoma City Limits, just like a lot of the other businesses out there, what used to be DND Feed, and some of, some of the other businesses that are located there at Fifty-Ninth and Harrah Road. But my biggest concern is, just like these other folks, is I'm a small cattle farmer out there, and more and more, for some reason, it continues to grow with residential neighborhoods that are, in my understanding of this, also in violation of some of the city codes, in that, for whatever reason, these developers are able to come in there. I think the latest one was at Fifty-Ninth and Choctaw, which is about two miles back west of this location. A developer bought a hundred-and-twenty acres, and for whatever reason, he was allowed to subdivide that into small lots, just like inner-city, not five-acre lots. And that continues to seem to be the trend out there, for whatever reason. And it is zoned for the agriculture, and from my understanding of it, it's supposed to be a minimum of five acres on all of that. And the business, the business aspect of it, we all did move out there for the peace, quiet, country living aspect of it. And there are already many established businesses out there that, that if we need something, whether it be food as a grocery store, or feed for our cattle, or anything else, community hardware within two miles of that intersection right there. We just, we're afraid of all of the things that this business is going to bring to our community out there. As a police officer, I can tell you this, whenever we would have a wreck up there on I-40 near Choctaw Road, traffic is usually diverted up to either Fifty-Ninth and Peabody or Fifty-Ninth and Harrah, and then they got to take Fifty-Ninth out to usually about Anderson Road before they can get back up on the highway there. And if, I don't know if any of y'all live out there or not, but if you've ever experienced that, it is an absolute traffic nightmare. And the, the intersections and the roads are just not designed to handle that amount of traffic for that. And in addition to this, you know, he's going to be, if this is allowed to become a commercial zone, it's going to put more vehicular traffic that is oversized for what those roads were developed for out there. Choctaw Road, if y'all are familiar with it at all, north of Vi-40 there, they just finished widening that to four lanes for the most of it. My understanding is, eventually, that'll be a four-lane road that goes all the way up into Edmond, or intersects with a turnpike, or I really don't know what all their plans are, but, you know, we've got, when they, whenever they build these roads, they widen them, and they did the same thing with Anderson, they're putting sidewalks on there, and I know that came up on one of the other issues. And we, we've got two-mile sidewalks that dead-end to nowhere, and the city doesn't maintain them, and even if somebody was inclined to walk on them, they can't, because the weeds is so overgrown on them. And to me, that's just a waste of money, and a lot of times on sidewalks like that, especially in a rural community like we live in. People ain't out for walks out there, they have their own property to walk on, they don't need to walk up and down city streets. But again, we're just trying to keep our community as rural as possible, and I can see this being the first step as commercializing even more and more of it, as the city seems to continue to crowd out small ranchers and stuff. So, that's about all I have. Thank you.
Y'all are getting tired of this, I know. Hi, I'm Catherine Hayes, six-three-zero-one Adobe Drive. I'm actually on his map. The two blank spaces were actually covered up by his little northwest-east-south, and the other, the two blank spaces are where my neighbor and I kind of, I get to play with his horse, and he gets to pay the bills. Mo, we love you, you know that, and you know we think it's a great idea. Ma'am, wrong place. Please. Sorry.
Please address your remarks to us.
You're right. We're asking for your help, we're asking for you guys to just join us in saying no to Mo. We don't need Mo stress on our already low aquifer, Mo traffic on a road that cannot structurally handle the load it has now. Our potholes are so big, Beals Abub himself came up for coffee the other morning, they're bad. We don't need Mo accidents. Two of the exits are actually on Peabody Road, which is a visually obstructed road. Two exits on a hill, not a good idea. Mo potholes, Mo bridges collapsing, more noise pollution, we like our frogs and zirchadas. Mo light pollution, right now, we can walk out and see the stars. Bunch of streetlights, not going to happen. Mo flooding from the runoff, because when you pave seven-and-a-half acres of upland forest, that water now has nowhere to go. Right now, it has a natural direction, I myself have a twenty-one-foot ravine in the back of my property from that natural direction of flow. So, we're talking some major impact of water. And Mo chemicals in our water and our aquifer from not only construction and pesticides, but just from leaky cars in the parking lot, things like that are going to happen. So, once again, I'm going to keep this short, so please just help us out, and we love Mo, but it's time to say no to Mo. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jimmy Lively, I live at one-seven-seven-three-three Southeast Fifty-Ninth Street. Okay, in nineteen-seventy-eight, we called Oklahoma City and asked them what the zoning was in that area. They come back and said, "All that area is agriculture." And I said, "That's farmland." I said, "Okay, we're buying one to build a home on." And they said, "That was fine, no problem." I said, "Okay, what about tomorrow?" They said, "It will always be zoned agriculture." And I got one more comment, I hope it don't offend anybody, but several years ago, one woman changed prayer in schools. Now, one man is trying to change the lifestyle of a lot of people out there in that area, and we're praying you will consider our lifestyle. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you. Come on.
Chris Peoples, sixty-three oh-nine Adobe, and I'm right next to all these good folks here, I'm actually in the back, where you can't see on the map, but directly affected, this is dirt road right there. I retired Navy, and decided to move out to the country we got out there, love it. I'm a lieutenant on the New Walla Fire Department, and one of the concerns we had, we support Station Thirty-Six out there, Harrah, Choctaw, Little Axe, McLeod, they all mutual aid each other. One of the concerns is fire support for that. Something happens out there, you're in an area where mutual aid may have to come in, is Station Thirty-Six even set up to handle it, if it was the only thing they were doing at the time? Possibly. But still, you're looking at interdependency on the other departments that are mutual aided into that area. So, it was one of the concerns I had voiced before, and then, about being able to respond to stuff like that out there. Like they said, that's a bad road, it's a blind hill coming down, going up north on Peabody before Fifty-Ninth, bus stops for kids, so, there's a lot of impact on that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Missioners? We have comments, questions? I'm sorry, just a moment. Was there something you wanted to add?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, come up.
This must be new guy day. My name is Aaron Mongold, I live at eleven-zero-zero-eight Scorme Drive, which is south of this map, where I-40 is. I feel like a, a light in this darkness of negativity. I've listened to all those concerns, people have lived out there three-and-a-half years, people lived out there for, since nineteen-seventy-eight, we've lived out there since nineteen-eighty-one. These are the same arguments we heard against not paving Hundred and Fourth, these are the same arguments we had against people not wanting there to be a Peabody exit. The glaring admission that I've noted from all the people speaking against this idea is the idea that the turnpike is coming in, that this is a forward-thinking commission, and I agree with what they've said about traffic. We need the turnpike, we need two lanes going in each direction, but to be forward-thinking, we have to do these things now. And I am very much in the rural lifestyle, but I also like to have resources from the city of Oklahoma City, and be able to shop in places that don't end in Choctaw or Harrah. Thirty-six, the, the fire station took thirty years to build it, the response time to this site's about two, two-and-a-half minutes, response time to our site, to our house is now at one minute. But the benefits far outweigh the negatives, the glaring admission that this idea that we're all rural, we all raise cattle, we've raised pigs and chickens, I, like I said, have lived out there since nineteen-eighty-one. I enjoy the rural lifestyle, but at the same time, progress is a real thing, and I know, based on the projects that have been approved today, that this commission feels that way. You can only maintain a lifestyle when the needs of the community dictate that that lifestyle be maintained. I love living out in the country, I'm not going to say I don't, because I do, but I also like progress, I also like the benefits. We live in this no-man's-land of New Walla, we have a Stella address, McLeod Schools, and live, and have a well. So, we're in this kind of nexus of nowhere, whereby, we live in the city of Oklahoma City, but don't enjoy most of those benefits. We finally have the benefits of Thirty-Six, Station Thirty-Six, and I'd like to maintain the fact that, moving forward, we continue to get benefits. Just because we're a rural community, doesn't mean everybody has cattle, they don't. Have a swimming pool, and a nice place to walk, I agree with that. These sidewalks to nowhere are great, but they will be connected in the future, and that's a glaring admission that I continue to see from everyone that's opposed to this. This idea that we're still living in the nineteen-hundreds, or that it's still nineteen-oh-seven, is not true. We're living in a community that's exploded, its growth is enormous, I agree with what he said as far as the additions, additions are everywhere. I believe that this rural community has been misrepresented by the people who protested against it. There are houses everywhere, large homes, large additions, and another retail outlet is a benefit to some people out there. I hate having to drive to Midwest City and know all my tax dollars, and my tax base and my land taxes go to a, a system that's not being supported, because I have to shop in Harrah, or I have to shop in Choctaw, or I must drive to Midwest City. The resources that Mo brings to this, the benefits from this business, benefit everyone. I agree, the structure of the road needs to be changed, but that's coming. If you've ever driven on this road, you'll note that the population has exploded, we need to catch up with the times and recognize that things have to change, things have to be done to meet this growing demand, the turnpike is just one of those. I think the needs of the community have changed, I think you can both keep... If you've ever driven on this road, you'll note that the population has exploded. We need to catch up with the times and recognize that things have to change, things have to be done to meet this growing demand, the turnpike is just one of those. I think the needs of the community have changed. I think you can both keep some rural character and still move forward with the exploding population. I'm very much a person who lives in a rural community and support this project 100%. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'll keep it brief, just because I had my wisdom teeth out Tuesday. So, I'm here on behalf of my kids. I moved out just to the...
Excuse me, sir, give me your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Jory Daniel. I live at 5600 Sunset Ridge. So, I'm just to the left of the corner, northwest corner of that. But I don't, I'm not a farmer. I don't have any livestock, chickens, but I did grow up in rural Oklahoma, just over by Enid. And I just moved out there, like I said, in June, from the Westmore High School area. Busy, but I have a one-year-old and a three-year-old that I wanted to raise like I was raised. You know, Oklahoma City does have a lot of things to offer, it's where my wife and I work. We moved out there knowing the drive we would have, the commute we'd have in the mornings, and I get my hair cut in the city when I'm coming to or from work. I will pick up my dry cleaning on the way to the city, I plan for that as well. So, the benefits that this is proposing, nothing was, you know, I was prepared for those losses of benefits whenever I moved out to this area. So, and there are people that are not farmers out there, there's one and better way of life and growing up, you know, raising their children with them. I can go on a walk with them and they see no cars. I'm in a small, little community over there, and we have rabbits that we'll see when we get to our, you know, house, that will let us come within two or three feet, that my daughter has named already. We've only been out there since June. And same way with, you know, deer and such like that. And that stuff will start to begin to be lost out there. Oklahoma City has a lot of things to offer, maps, projects, bringing you more things, I can go on and on. The one thing it doesn't have much of, that we're losing, is the rural atmosphere, rural community. So, I hope that we, you know, we don't lose that. People coming off the turnpike can see that, when they first come into Oklahoma City, they're gonna see the rural community. You come into Midwest City, they'll see, you know, Tinker, and come into the metro. So, I'll keep it brief, my mouth is hurting, but I owe it to my kids to be here because that's why I moved out there two months ago. Thanks.
Thank you. I feel fairly certain that if my councilor were here, he would tell us that we've heard enough, that we know what the issues are, and that, you know, the question before us is fairly clearly defined. If any of you have any other questions or comments that you want to offer to the applicant, I'll give a little time for that. But I really would like to vote on this matter before we lose Commissioner Highsmith, so... Did you have something else you felt you needed to say?
Well, again, to add it, since 82, I've been doing business, there's seven days a week I go back and forth. I never see a farm.
Beginning with again, you've already lost me.
Yes, there is no farm.
If we've heard it, we don't need to hear it again.
Okay. And this map that you all have on shows the five residents. This is the seven-and-a-half acre corner, the guy across the street have five acre. He's 100% behind it, the letter is there. The lady that lives third house from down there, and the gentleman lives fourth house down there, both 100% for it. Larry that lives right here on 6601 South Peabody Road on the corner, he's 100% for it. His letter is there.
We have that.
Correct.
We have that.
So, the 10 neighbors that I had to notify, five of them are 100% supporting this project. With my application, I have a petition with over 82 signature, I have 40 additional signature from the residents and people of Newwalla that are supportive of that. And again, the issue goes to the tax dollars. When I ran my store, my average annual sales, 1.6 million dollars a year, annual sales, the tax generated, the sales tax for McCloud School, and 82, I was the only one had the store. There is no other store in Newwalla area. DND feed is in Hera.
That's really not what we're here to decide today, though. Thank you. I guess I do want to say a few things to everybody that's here. The issue of the support or the opposition to this application bears on a decision in the sense that it is incumbent upon us to make a determination as to whether the application adversely impacts the area. And so, when people come and they tell us that they think it's adversely impacting the area, we listen to that. But the numbers game, how many people are here and how many people there, and how many are within the signature limit and so forth, that really is something that bears more on the decision that the city council will make. Their decision is a political decision. Our decision has to do with the land use involves, about whether this particular use is appropriate at this particular location. And I appreciate very, very much all the time and effort you people have put in to come down here today and to give us your opinions and to help us make this decision. But I would like for us now, very quickly, to concentrate our efforts on the land use questions involved. And I'll go first. I cannot support this application. It seems very clear to me that it is simply premature. It, and I hate to be the bearer of bad news, especially to you folks, but progress is coming, there's no question. There's, you know, residential redevelopment will make its way to you. How long it'll take is something that, you know, you can gamble on, but it'll get there sooner or later. Hopefully, you know, after we're all long gone, but it'll come eventually. But it's not there yet, and it seems to me that there are too many factors that outweigh the benefit of putting this kind of a development at this location at this time. If I were to give the slightest consideration to moving forward with an S-PUD on this property, it would have to be something that would just really knock it out of the park. It would have to be, you know, 100% tree preservation. It would have to be the best-looking buildings, you know, this side of Mississippi. It would have to be something other than a pretty plain, three-building, corner, commercial lot, and that's what I'm looking at. So, I cannot support this application, and that's what I have to say on that subject.
Couple of things I'd like to say. You know, we sit in a really unique situation. You know, we have to look at, and I know where these came from. I live in that area, so I'm pretty familiar where all these names for the zoning came from, and I think there's 60, there's 73 names on that are for the zoning. And there's, I don't know, what, 40 out here that's against the zoning. We have to sit up here and make a decision. And like the chairman said, it's for land use, not for the particular zoning, but it's for that land use. And then, you know, we have to sit up here and try to make a decision based on what we've heard in meetings, what we've heard in, you know, I asked Mo about two or three months ago, that I would not support this unless he had a neighborhood meeting, which he did, and I respect him for that. I think that's one of the things that we have to do when we change a zoning on a piece of property, especially when it impacts a neighborhood. I have sat up here for 14 years or thereabout, and I can remember one time that I thought I was gonna have to get down below this horseshoe to keep from getting things thrown at me. About a year and a half later, the zoning that we did, the main guy that was in protest of the zoning, it was an on cue at Willshire and Northwest Highway. I was getting gas. I noticed the guy on the next pump, kept looking at me. I thought, you know, what is the deal? So, pretty soon he walked over, and he said, "Aren't you Mr. Allen on the planning commission?" And I thought, "Oh, no." You know, here I am by myself, you know, I was getting my cellphone out, I'm ready to call the police. But anyway, and I said, "Yes, sir, I am." He said, "I need to apologize." He said, "I was the biggest advocate against this on cue being at this location." He said, "But it's the best thing that ever happened to us." So, we do get, we get both sides, okay? And I have to agree with our chairman, and I've sat in these meetings, as you well know. And I live in the area, and I made comments. I've got a Dollar General less than a quarter of a mile south of my house that just went in about the same time we had meetings on this one a couple of years ago. It's been an asset to my community. It's, you know, and somebody mentioned while ago about the tax dollar. Yeah, I go to Midwest City, I go to Choctaw, I go to Norman, Moore, and spend my tax dollar. And somebody said, "Well, we don't have real good roads out there, we don't have real good police protection." Well, how do we get that tax dollar? This has been a really tough decision for me to make, and it comes down to exactly what the chairman indicated. You know, I think it's premature at this particular time. I think we are, we're probably two or three years, maybe five years away from, but we're gonna see zoning in that area, so we might as well get ready for it. You know, and it's just one of those things that, you know, if everybody would quit having babies and, you know, all these things, that we wouldn't have to have those housing additions, we wouldn't have to have shopping areas and things like that. But we don't want to stand in the way of progress. And, but again, I think this area is a little premature at this particular point. Mo, did you have something else?
I was gonna say, Mr. Allen, at this time, the zoning I have on this seven-and-a-half acre, which I don't need to come here, get anybody's permission, I can put agricultural processing plant, animal raising commercial, animal sales and service, horse stables, animal sale service kennel and veterinarians, composting, family daycare homes, greenhouse, hog farm, home garden, hoop house, light public protection and utility, and I can put five houses out there. Now, as far as the pollution of water resources, creating runoff, I think five houses would create more than two stores there. So, the zoning that I have, that I can put these businesses in there, hog farm, processing plant, organic farm, resale, neighborhood garden, things like that, and any of those would have the same kind of traffic, the accident-causing, which is not true. My store is not gonna cause accidents, my store gonna create lights, gonna, people know it's there, they can see it before they get top of the hill. So, these are the...
Members of the commission have specific questions for the applicant, that's fine. Otherwise, I'd like to confine the discussion to amongst ourselves, please. If anybody else has anything they want to say, if not, I'll take a motion. Either way.
My comments have been made, I'm in agreement with you guys. It's tough, but it's, I'm in agreement. So, I'll make the motion to deny the application.
I'm gonna second the motion.
I have a motion in a second to deny item number 31. Would you cast your votes, please? And it's denied.
So, green is approved of denial.
Approved the denial, that's right. And it's denied. Thank you for coming. If you'll leave quietly, I would really appreciate it. We're gonna take a break, and I think we're gonna lose Commissioner Highsmith, so... 10 minutes, we'll go 10 minutes. Ten minutes, we'll go ten minutes.
We got a class.
(inaudible) Let's go. We're reconvening the Economic City Planning Commission, and we're going to move up item We're going to move up item 33 because we need, um, Commissioner Allen's vote, so...
For the record. Item 33 is C 69007, it's the preliminary plat of Oak Hollow Industrial Park, phase three.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman and Commissioner, for moving this up. Uh, we were continued last time because we didn't have enough votes, but it's a, this is a preliminary plat of an industrial park, it's phase two, or phase three, I'm sorry, of, uh, Oak Hollow Industrial Park, near I-35 and south of, southwest 89th Street. Large industrial tracks, large industrial buildings being built out here. Um, we're extending, um, Polaris Drive down to 96th Street, and they have not decided how they're going to connect to the west and east yet, so we are asking for these temporary cul-de-sacs to be allowed. They're in a temporary easement that'll be released when this connect, connects east and west, and so that's why we need the variance.
Can I ask not to slow up the process, but, uh, the temporary nature of them, is, is that somehow built into the approval we're giving?
Well, they're separate from the plat, so we don't have to give, we don't have to come back and replat or vacate a portion of the plat. So they're, they're set aside as temporary easements to be recorded.
Okay.
So before the final plat becomes before you, these will be recorded, and that way we can release them, uh, separate from the plat, when the streets connect.
And do we have any sense of when that might be?
Um, probably as this begins to develop out, they'll make their decision how they're going to connect to Pole and I-35 Frontier Road.
Okay. Is there anybody that wants to be heard on this matter? Members of the commission? I need a motion.
Motion to, uh, accept the variance?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the variance on item number 33. Would you cast your votes, please? The variance is approved.
Make a motion to approve the application.
Second a motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 33. Cast your votes, please.
Thank you.
It's approved. Thank you.
Going back to item number 32 for case PUD 1644, Turizone 2501, South High Avenue from R1 to PUD 1644.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, who's also with me, Mr. Chad Corey. Um, this is an application that we continued, uh, for several times, uh, for, for multitude of reasons. We wanted to, to work with various members of this commission, we, there were several meetings that needed to take place, um, with levels of staff, and so I want to thank, Commissioner Powers, Commissioner Cooper, for taking time, uh, to work with us and work through these issues. I'm handing you two exhibits, um, both of which staff has and can be displayed on the screen, and you might be asking, why am I showing you an exhibit of the river? Because that's nowhere near this site. Uh, what my client is intending to do is, he currently owns and operates the pole apart that is at Southwest 15th and Santa Fe. It's right on the river. What he proposes to do in this application is move that site. So the site that you're hearing today is a replacement for the site on the river. It's, it's my belief that this is a better site for the city to have the pole apart and allow the river site to be opened up for future development. So if we look at the subject site, which is on the screen before you, you see a couple of things. One, you see what look, look to be roads, uh, those aren't roads, those are track marks from people who have been trespassing and illegally dumping on this site for years. My client has already closed on this property and has done everything in his power to ensure that that activity has stopped, uh, since he bought it. Uh, the other thing that's striking about this site is the tree cover. It's one of the things that my client, uh, was attracted to this site, uh, because of. If you look at the site plan that's contained in your PUD, one of the things you're going to see is, we actually broke this out into two different tracks. Uh, Ms. Lincoln, if you could put the, the exhibit that has the, the red dashed lines that staff produced? There you go. The site to the west that, that shows as, as R1, uh, what we've done in the PUD is we've labeled that a separate tract, and that tract is limited to no development. It's intended to keep all those trees to act as a buffer to the west. Uh, similarly, there is significant tree cover to the north, and we have provisions within our, our PUD to make sure that that tree cover is likewise maintained to provide a buffer to the, to the north. To the east, you have a series of other industrial type uses. I don't know how many people have had the opportunity, uh, to drive out there, uh, but if you look at the map, although it looks like a lot of residential, there's also a lot of industrial. It's an area that, that is kind of a hodgepodge, uh, of uses. So we believe that the site provides us a, a nice opportunity to keep that tree cover to provide the necessary buffers, uh, that one would need to operate this use. Um, further, one of the main issues with this site, and why perhaps it has remained undeveloped for, for such a long time, when my client was going through the process of his due diligence to acquire this parcel, he had to have a phase one environmental study performed. And what that study found is, um, there's a spot, they started, they did a series of bore tests. When they, they got to one, it produced such a high result of, and I'm, I'm not going to attempt to say the words that they found, but, um, they, they found a significant amount of petroleum-based products that were contaminating the ground. Um, and what you find is, for residential development, the, the threshold is 50 MG per KG. Anything above that is not considered suitable for residential, and some sort of mediation would be necessary. The levels they found on this site are 10 times the allowable levels for residential development. Because his use was an industrial use, he told, uh, the company to stop. There was no, no need to spend additional money to find out what he already knew, residential development would not work here. So the reason that there was only a handful of bores done, and that only one of them showed it, was because of what I just said, they stopped. But there's an affidavit that you have in your packet, if you look at the historical photos from the 40s and 50s, they looked at all the different uses that were on the site and tried to locate where some of the oil and gas operations were going. The bore that came up dirty was an area that had a large lagoon. Uh, it was his, our engineer's belief that this was a, an open pit where petroleum-based products were just dumped. And so it's a significant area outside of that one bore, but again, they stopped because they, they knew the answer to the question. One of the things the study found is, it, it's at such a level that they asked that any, any transactional property, there has to be a deed restriction placed on it, to notify the public of this contamination. And so while this site doesn't lend itself anymore to residential development, it potentially lends itself very well to this site, especially considering the tree coverage that we have. There are a few questions that, that I know I got from Ms. Powers and, and Mr. Cooper. Our area, where his operations will go, are going to be centered back up in the area that's already cleared, and that area will be fenced. Uh, the crushing that occurs, all occurs between the hours of eight to five. Um, you had asked about additional landscaping, uh, perhaps on the east and the south, my, my client is, um, more than willing to do that. Um, Ms. Powers, you mentioned the lack of language about EMD and non-accessory signs, we, we're more than willing to, um, to add that as well, as a TE. If you look at your TEs, we agree to all four of them, uh, except, I need to clarify, on number four, the car crushing will occur within a building, uh, but it's a three-sided building, w- one wall is open. Um, Ms. Powers is out on site, she saw the crusher, she saw where these, these operations happened, um, so we're, we're fine with that, I just need to make sure that we, we clarified it as a three-sided building, um, for, for that use. Uh, but we do agree with, again, all the other TEs, um, be happy to answer any questions, it's been a long, it, it's been a long road to get here, uh, lots of meetings with lots of different people, um, and I, I think, I, I hope we're at a point now where, um, there's some, a comfort level with my client's use, um, with his, the way he maintains his property. Um, if you've been out there and, and you kind of envision a salvage yard, it's amazing how clean it, it is, it, it's organized chaos, and they do an amazing job of maintaining efficiencies. The site they have on the river is just simply too big, they don't need that much space anymore. So this site, uh, provides a nice size for them, and again, you know, citywide, provides a, a wonderful opportunity to open up a site on the river for development. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just want to be really clear, uh, one of the things that you and I talked about was that there was some discrepancy in the staff report between the uses allowed and then uses that were not allowed within so many feet of residential.
Oh, sure.
One of which is listed as truck stop, there's not going to be any truck stop on this property.
That's correct, it, that, um, I believe is an error, because that's not a listed use in our, um, in our PUD. And, and I did forget to mention, uh, when I spoke to you, and also you, um, we did take out a series of other uses, uh, the PUD has been amended and sent to staff, and I'll be happy to read those into the record. The following uses were deleted from the PUD, uh, animal intermittent services, automotive parking garages, automotive parking lots as principal use, communication services antenna, communication services broadcast towers, drinking establishments, sit-down alcohol permitted, gasoline sales, small restricted, and personal storage, all of, all of which have been deleted, uh, from the PUD master design statement.
He, uh, David just addressed, um, the usages that had been omitted, um, that he failed to mention initially, and so, um, just wanted to get a, uh, all of the commissioners a feel for the, the use for that corner, really, that they want commercial use for, and so...
Yeah, so we have a, kind of an odd-shaped tract, if you look at it, and it kind of dips down to the south. And so the reason we've got some of the uses that are outside and apart from what we need for, um, his main use, is because we, we think there could be potential for commercial use there on the south, on that, what would be the northeast, or excuse me, northwest corner of 25th and High. Um, and so that's why we have those uses in there, uh, potentially to provide another visual buffer long-term. buffer long-term.
Is there anybody here who wants to be heard on this matter? Commissioners?
I do want to note our conversation with Commissioner Highsmith that he had some concerns about not having protests because of the area that this is actually being proposed for. In my conversation also with him, and I think Janice, you've had conversation also with Kathy, and just kind of looking at this whole Tiff district and the revitalization that was intended for this area is not, it has not at this point really generated the kind of interest, I think, that people would want in a Tiff district. And so also with the, I guess, moving away from the river, it may provide a better opportunity for development in the future. And this is really a difficult thing because of the very nature of this business. And yet, I think you've done as good a job as possible in terms of buffering the neighborhood, the school, and everything else from this particular site. And so I think it's pretty much done the best you could. And so I thank you for working.
You're welcome.
Is that a motion?
Are there any other comments from the commissioner? Given all considerations, I'll move for adoption.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve item number thirty-two. Could you cast your votes, please? You've got to do better than that. We'll note, we'll note that Commissioner Cooper has cast his vote in affirmative. And it passes.
Thank you.
There we go.
You better get IT over here.
Okay, item thirty-four is KC sixty-eight ninety-four, the preliminary plat of Magnolia Landing.
Again, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates here on behalf of the applicant. This is an area along the turnpike that the city council has approved the RA zoning. And the client in this case wants to do a very exclusive neighborhood and has, because of that, it was a straight zoning case, the concern was the restriction of the tree removal. And we worked very closely with the staff on the issues regarding the saving the trees. And we were able to work with the client to get him to agree to put a note on the final plat before it goes to council. That restricts the amount of tree removal that each lot owner can do on their lot, down to forty percent. And so with that, it gives us over sixty percent of tree preservation on this plat. They're going to adhere as much as possible to the lay of the land. Those of you that are familiar with stone mill and additions like that, where we come in and, you know, surgically remove trees to put the road in, that's our intent here, is to work through, so there may be bumps in the road, one way or another, to miss a big tree. And that's what they want to do. They want to be very hands-on. So that's what's being proposed. This is the preliminary plat, of course. And we do not have any action TEs. We agree with what's been written, all the standard stuff. Would ask your approval.
Agreements with the TEs?
Yes, sir.
I would note that the design, the preliminary plat, is in conformance with subdivision regulations. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on this matter today? Commissioner?
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Second a motion.
Have a motion and second to approve item number thirty-four. Could you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
There you go. And it is approved.
Item thirty-five is SPOD nine eighty-two to rezone ten seven hundred, South Pennsylvania Avenue, Suite twenty-one, from C three to SPOD nine eighty-two.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Long Dan Tran. My name is Long Dan Tran. So my address is thirty-two zero-nine, South West Ninety-Nine Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, seven three one five nine. So I'm here to request a permit for shop, alcoholic in my salon. So get her help.
This is a first for us, commissioners, I have to say. And I have some concerns about it, but the square footage is so minimal that I feel certain that, my concerns have to do with the fact that when we're approving this sale of alcoholic beverages that are not in conjunction with food service, you're talking about, you know, licensing a bar. And since it runs with the land, whether the nail salon comes or goes, you know, is problematic. Here, you're talking about such a small area, and as an SPOD, they're tying the alcohol service to the nail salon. So it is that use that is, it's accessory to. So that makes me feel much more comfortable with this idea. And I'm guessing it is not the last one of these things we'll see. Nail salons are just the beginning, I feel sure.
Can I modify the alcohol statement? Is, I've talked with Mr. Tran, and his intent is not to sell anything. Is that correct?
Yeah, just a complimentary for customers.
He would give away beer and wine.
Oh, so it's to be able to serve, you mean?
He would.
As far as the zoning is concerned, I'm not sure it's any different, is it?
He's not, well, I don't, I would not approve the application if, if it was the regular alcohol overlay. Because somebody could buy that property and then have a bar in.
Well, only one hundred square foot bar.
Well, I know.
In addition to a nail salon, but.
Well, if they could buy the property and turn the whole building into a bar, couldn't they?
No.
It's limited to their site plan and the specific uses of nail salon.
Okay.
Nobody could just buy it and turn it into a bar.
But in any case, can we modify the overlay to say, give a, cannot sell anything, and it's only beer and wine?
I'll defer to legal on that. I'm not sure that that's really within our purview.
No, I mean, that's the, what they're asking for is to serve alcohol. Whether they charge or not is really not up to the commission.
Well, but as long as it has to be a nail salon.
And it's only a hundred square feet.
Yeah. Then I'm, then I'm in favor of the application.
Is that a motion?
A motion to approve the application.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve item number thirty-five. Could you cast your votes, please? It's approved.
Thank you.
Item thirty-six is SPOD nine eighty-three to rezone eleven oh six, North Garner Avenue, from R one and C four to SPOD nine eighty-three.
Hi, my name is Robert Angelo, sixty-four twenty-one Avondale Drive, on behalf of Harold Green. And Mr. Green's application is to continue using his existing land, change the zoning. He processes firewood. He cuts it, chops it, and no clients or customers come to him. He delivers it. And he's trying to remain compliant with the city.
No buildings are proposed?
No buildings.
Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this matter? Commissioners?
Great.
Do you have a motion?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve item number thirty-six. Cast your votes, please. It's approved.
Thank you, commissioners.
Item thirty-seven is SPOD nine ninety-one to rezone twenty-eight ten, North MacArthur Boulevard, from R one, R four, and C three to SPOD nine nine one.
Thank you. I'm Weldon Hughes. I'm here on behalf of L and M LLC. My address is thirty-three oh one, North Flamingo, Bethany, Oklahoma. The application is to rezone twenty-eight ten, North MacArthur, to a SPOD nine nine one. Protests in your packet were addressed, and I believe those concerns have been relieved by agreement of the applicant.
Part of that agreement is that we're going to leave a fifty-foot buffer between you and the residential properties.
That's correct.
Behind you. And they're going to install an eight-foot site-proof fence?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
I do have a couple of people who are signed up to be heard. Commissioners have any questions before I call them? No? And Ms. Cook, are you here? Did you want to speak? Give us your name and address.
Ava Louise Cook, twenty-eight ten, North Molton. I'm a member of the Windsor Oaks Neighborhood Association, as well as a homeowner. And I have spoke with Mr. Hughes, and we have agreed to the fifty-foot barrier, as well as the eight-foot fence. And he has addressed also the other concerns that we had submitted.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have also a sign-up sheet from Martin Johnson. Did you want to be heard? Mr. Hughes, when you and I spoke, you told me that there would not be any lighting on this site.
That is correct. The only lighting that will be there will be at the entry gate as a security light.
Thank you.
Some of the other, I might say, operations, that was a question, the operation hours, it'll be from daylight to dark.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And also, security, they were concerned of security dogs. There will be no dogs on the property.
Thank you.
I think that were the five concerns.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I'm Martin Johnson. I live at fifty-eight hundred Northwest Twenty-Sixth Street, Oklahoma City. I live just due south of where this, they're supposed to put this thing in. My concern is about the water that's going to be coming off of that, because that area right there is prone to all the water that comes down MacArthur, goes right straight down Twenty-Sixth Street in front of my house near. You have another proposal for Taylor Manor Two, which is going to go, trying to get it over on the east side of us. All that water that comes from this up here is going to come down here, and it's just going to quadruple the amount of water that they're going to have to take there, plus what we're going to have to absorb ourselves. Since the water that comes from them, we have to accept it. And, you know, like the old saying, it all goes downhill. And I have another concern is about the wildlife that's there. We have a gray fox that lives there. Every morning you can see it, and every night, in the evening, you can see it. And they're one of the very few foxes that are, that can, animal like that that climbs trees. And so it's kind of a, I don't know if it really classifies it as endangered species or not, but it's, you know, it's kind of hard to find them, especially to find one in a residential area like this. Also, we have the dove, we got the whale. And every summer, we have harrier hawks that come in and nest in all those trees. And that's where they have their young, and then, you know, they go on. But the, it's really the, the water is the main concern. Because off, it used to be Concho's Construction Company there. I've been off over there for sixty-five years. So all the water that comes off of them goes into the retention pond that's in behind Neil's Veterinary Hospital. And I think it is put in wrong, because every time it rains, that water shoots out a, probably a twenty-four inch, ten-hundred pipe. I mean, just floods right straight out, and it floods down between my house and the house next door, and then it floods out in front of my house, then right on down to where they're getting ready to put in, or they're trying to put in Taylor Manor Two. But they're trying to figure out how to get rid of the water, since there's no drains anywhere around it. I think the closest drain on MacArthur is Melrose Lane, and the other one is at Thirty-Sixth and MacArthur. It's pretty about, let's, yeah.
Thank you. And, Mr. Hughes, will, will the area be paved?
No, ma'am. It's going to be pervious base. It'll be a gravel. There will be no concrete there, so it shouldn't change. There should not be any more water than what, you know, than what there is now.
It's my understanding that we would not permit that, right? That they can't, there can't be any more water runoff from the site than it currently exists.
I exchanged emails with Mr. Highsmith earlier this week regarding that. He was asking what kind of base would be there and so forth. If it was going to be an impervious or what, and I told him it was going to be gravel.
Mr. Johnson, have you, have you seen a site plan for what it is that they're intending to do with the property?
No, I did not get a mail of that in the mail. I just happened to find out about it from the next one, Avery, yesterday.
They have agreed to increase the buffer, the tree cover reservation area there to fifty feet. Then the property will not be paved, so I don't know if that helps to assuage any of your concerns.
Well, if it's, like you say, if it's gravel, it's still going to be, it'll be absorbed by the land. You know, the soil itself will take and absorb it. The, the trees, you know, which is another, another very good source of getting rid of the water, because it's, you know, nature's way of doing all that stuff. So this here's going to be at the backside of twenty-eight.
The east, yes, the east. Basically, the east half of it, yes.
So what's going to be on the front of it?
Nothing at this time. Eventually, it will be developed into a retail center.
As long as the, you know, the buffer, natural buffer, is there going to be one on the south or just going to be on the north?
No, just on the east. Be a fifty-foot rather than the twenty-five that we first applied for.
Yeah, I heard that it's going to be a twenty-five. I just worry about the wildlife. That's my main concern. The water's going to be taken care of, because, you know, what does come down here, you know, we do have to accept it. But you'll see me in about two months when I get ready to talk about Taylor Manor, because...
Well, I look forward to that.
Because the water's still going to go somewhere. As they always say, you know, once it gets into the ground, it's going to come out somewhere.
You know, if you, if you will get with staff, maybe they can direct you to who might best be able to answer those questions for you, and who best might be able to process your comments as they're reviewing that upcoming. I'm not aware of the development you're discussing, but we certainly would like to have your input.
Yeah, I just, like I said, just more about the environmental impact than anything else.
I get that.
I would like to say that I appreciate the developer and the homeowners association getting together and working through those five issues that you raised, and would encourage the developer to go ahead and consider leaving as many of those trees as possible, particularly those three big ones along that property line. And agreeing to increase the buffer from twenty-five to fifty, that was very important. And I would move a motion to approve this application.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve item number thirty-seven. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you, commissioners.
Item thirty-eight is a comp plan amendment, number six for the year, to change the land use ecology area from urban low intensity and urban reserve to rural medium intensity in an area low... in an area located southwest of East Memorial Road and I-35. And Philip Walter, please give you some background on this case.
Hello? Thank you. I'll be as brief as I can. So here is the overview of the site. That is a four-point-four acre site that the applicant has proposed that change for, and it's worth noting over the course of evaluation, staff suggested expanding that site to the area closed in the blue line there. For a little frame of reference, we're up on the Edmund border of the city, near I-35 up in the northeast. This is Ward Seven, and there's that small, little, little area of ULI and urban reserve that we're considering today. Zooming back in again, four-point-four acres is the applicant's site that they proposed an office use on within that larger urban reserve area right along Memorial Road. Here's the existing land use around, and this is where it starts to get interesting. On the Edmund side of the line, that's a fairly urban land use pattern, some office, some ODOT land, but we might call that an industrial use if it were in our city. And then some urban level residential. But on our side of the line, we have a lot of undeveloped or larger lot residential, five and two, and one acre, almost everything there on, or everything on our side of the line on its own for utilities. This is also one of the ESAs, the upland forest area, covers both this site and most of the UL, sorry, the urban reserve area. Now, the interesting part about the site is the utilities. There's no access to Oklahoma City public water. Edmund does have water across the street, and the applicant has said that they hope to be able to attach to that. But we have no wastewater in the area and no reasonable way to connect to wastewater because of the topography in the area. But we are just within the preferred response time for fire service, which is what's depicted on this map. Station two there is a few miles away, but because of the highway can still reach this area quite quickly, giving it that urban level of service, or at least that service. So the reasons that it was originally designated ULI and UR are that although the utilities are not there yet, the transportation infrastructure is very much more of a could-be-urban, and then the fire response is at an urban level, or was at the time of designation. But the considerations that are primary for changing the LUTA are that the development that has occurred since it was originally designated UR has closed down most, or at least reduced the potential for any sort of long-term urban-level sewer provision. There's just simply less and less area now that would have to share in the large cost of providing truly urban service for sewer. And then the infrastructure for transportation there, that arterial street next to a highway, that's still, according to the rural medium LUTA, a very appropriate place for rurally compatible use. And again, still within the urban fire service time. So the recommendation from staff is to approve the application and go on, because of that, and designate the entire ULI, UR area as rural medium, to be more consistent with what we're seeing there now. Are there any questions?
Remove the application.
So this particular pattern, though, you're suggesting that it seems to be the pattern that is consistent for this area, is that correct?
Within this area, particularly within the Oklahoma City portion, if we were to look at it today and try to apply a new, a new land use topology, fresh eyes, we would probably choose the rural medium topology now. It is complicated by the fact that across the street, it's not us, it's Edmund, but it is a little bit more urban on that side of the street.
Remove the application.
Move the application? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve, I've lost track of my item number, thirty-eight. Could you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Item thirty-nine is the related rezoning application for the comp plan amendment. Excuse me. So it's S.P.U.D. nine ninety-two to rezon fifty-four hundred East Memorial Road from AA to S.P.U.D. nine ninety-two.
Jim Johnson with Johnson Associates here on behalf of the applicant. I want to thank the staff for their great presentation and the work that they've done, working with us on trying to develop this tract. To answer the question about water, we have been in communication with Edmund, and with the agreement Oklahoma City currently has with Edmund, we anticipate that we will be bringing water from Edmund, which is just across the street. With regard to the sewer, staff is absolutely correct, there's not a feasible way to get gravity sewer, or even pump station sewer anywhere near here at a feasible cost. So what we're proposing is a office use in the S.P.U.D., and probably the largest concern by several of the commissioners and as well as the staff is the tree preservation. As discussed by the staff, this whole area is very heavily treed, but to do any kind of development other than resident, large lot residential, it's really difficult to get to that sixty percent that the staff desires. We were able, in this case, to work very hard with the developer, and as we've been, as we continue to condense the site, the advice of the staff has always been to try to condense your site as tight as you can inside, and leave the buffers as the, I'm sorry, leave the perimeters as the buffers, and capture your treescape in that area. We have done that. We've increased our side yard setbacks since the PUD was submitted, increased those to twenty feet. We have also been able to increase the tree preservation to a minimum of forty-five percent. And that does not count any of the green space inside the development. That's saving trees that are on the property. And an important thing to note is ODOT on Memorial has a large right-of-way, and in that right-of-way, there's a lot of large trees. We intend to leave those alone. So that's not counted in our percentage either, but it'll be really a good buffer along Memorial and screen back any cars as the site drops to the south. In the back part here, we intend to do our septic field. We've looked through the DEQ requirements, and it's our intent to work the septic field within the treed areas. So there may be some scrubs that get taken out to allow for the lateral lines, but because the contours are parallel with the south line, we can work our lateral lines very long across the back part of the property and spread them out in between the trees. And I've been successful doing that in other applications. And the trees survive and thrive, actually. So what we have before you is the application. We're going to change the minimum tree preservation in the PUD to forty-five percent. There's over five percent of green space that'll be added back as part of landscaping around the buildings. You can see we've provided bump outs in the parking area to allow those side buffers to stay deep and keep some of the bigger tree covers that are on our property lines. With that, we didn't have any TEs on the zoning case, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let me ask, is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this matter today, commissioners?
Jim, you're adding, what, five feet, is that correct, to the setbacks on the sides of the building? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the TEs, you in agreeance with the TEs? Can we add a TE that really addresses the preservation of the existing trees to cover forty-five percent?
We will amend and submit to the staff before it goes to council. That restriction is in the PUD.
Okay. So, but in essence, though, explain to me that it's really more than forty-five percent, because what you're really saying is that if the easement in the front is untouched-
Right.
-and landscaping trees, there's a landscaping plan that will be identified in the final plat along addressing these trees-
Right.
-that will get, will get to, will get to more than forty-five percent, exactly.
Correct. Will be slightly over fifty percent by the time we add in the landscaping being provided within the bounds of the parking area. This is obviously a schematic plan that may change a few square feet here and there, but we're fully intend to have over five percent on the site itself.
Commissioners?
Make a motion to approve the application subject to the technical evaluations.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number thirty-nine, subject to technical evaluations. Cast your votes, please.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Coffey, I think your microphone is still on.
Got it. Item forty is S.P.U.D. nine ninety-five to rezon twenty-one-three-hundred Southeast One Hundred and Fourth Street from PUD nine twenty-four and AA to S.P.U.D. nine-nine-five.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Jayse Bradling, thirteen-twenty Reese Court, Oklahoma City. I have a handout that I'd like to pass out, might make my remarks a little easier to understand.
Thank you.
This application is being brought by Melissa Barnes to permit the construction of a wedding chapel on the property of about five acres in size. There have been some modifications of the design statement and the master development site plan, which you have an insert in the packet that I gave you, that shows how the overflow parking has been addressed to increase the tree preservation by eliminating some of the parking areas. In addition to that modification, the design statement has been amended to provide, oh, and they have contacted residents in the area, some of the protesters that originally signed letters have signed letters in support, and I'll provide these as well. I'll just... The tree buffer, you will see in the modified drawing, extends along One Hundred and Fourth Street in front of the building and in front of the overflow parking to the west. The surface of the parking area and the driveways is going to be eight inches of ODOT spec type A aggregate, and that will permit the rainwater to rain through. There's not, it's good, we're going to try and eliminate as much impervious surface as possible with this development. Access will come from, will come from Hurry New Walla Road along a driveway that is One Hundred and Fourth and access the property to the east. Signage, on the back page of the stapled portion of the handout, you will see a sign that is going to be somewhat typical of what is proposed for this location. It isn't going to be exactly like that, but it's going to appear to be very natural in its appearance and be lighted with indirect lighting. In addition, paragraph seven of the design statement will be added under Article Three, Other Development Regulations, which will regulate the hours of operation of the wedding chapel. The hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, eight to ten, eight AM to ten PM, Saturday, eight AM to midnight, and Sunday, ten AM to ten PM. The applicant has, I think, had a conversation-
Excuse me, on the hours, can you go back over Saturday night for me, please?
Hours of operation on Monday through Friday, eight o'clock in the morning to ten o'clock at night. The hours of operation on Saturdays will be eight o'clock in the morning to midnight. On Sunday, it'll be ten o'clock in the morning to ten o'clock at night. I think the applicant has had several conversations with the city staff. I have not seen a staff report. I don't think she's received a staff report, so I can't address anything that may be contained in the staff report, but I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you may have.
When I spoke with Ms. Barnes, we talked about making a commitment that some percentage, we had talked about ninety percent of the existing, and we're talking about as of today, tree cover-
Right.
-would be preserved along a, and I suggested it be described as in-depth, a strip along the north property line. She was comfortable with that, but she hadn't come up with a number and thought she might be able to by today.
Well, that's what this amendment does. That shows the tree buffer along the north property line. There is, there are trees on the north side of the overflow parking, which failed to get noted as a tree buffer, but there are trees along that blue line that you see there on the west portion of property. We can make that amendment before this goes to council. We were kind of pressed for time, so we're kind of fortunate to get this out, but that one thing I think should be added.
And so what is that depth?
The depth is, this is a forty scale, it's about forty feet. Now, it isn't forty feet, it isn't forty feet to the overflow parking, it'll be about, it's like about, I don't, about twenty feet.
So along the northern twenty feet of the property, we're committing to preservation of?
Ninety percent of the existing trees.
I had rather thought it would be more than that. That the depth of the buffer would be more than that.
Well, I mean, the tree buffer is what it is as shown on this drawing. And it appears to be that it's, I get my scale ruler out, but I mean, it looks like that's about an inch, and it's a scale of one inch equals forty feet, so it looks like it's about an inch north and south, or forty feet north and south, and then it extends all the way over to the entries, to the entry drive, and then should be extended, again, on the west side of the entry drive, all the way over to the edge of the property line. And that, that can be amended as we move forward to the city council. But obviously, the overflow parking takes up some portion of the western part of the property, which it doesn't take on the eastern portion.
I know I have people here who want to be, I'm sorry, did you wanna say something? Give us your name and address for the record.
Melissa Barnes, ten seven hundred South Herr Road, and I also own the applicant property. In regards to getting, we were trying to get the surveyor out there last night to measure for today's meeting, and we were not able to do so, so I am not, we're not hundred percent positive what the footage is of that, but we can get that, and also, we could get a picture from a drone to show the actual current tree coverage, if that would be helpful.
That would be helpful.
And then also, um, the hours of operation on Friday would be the weekend hours, would be the eight A.M. to twelve P.M. So Friday and Saturday would have the same operation hours.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
If there are any other questions, I-
I know I have people here who want to be heard, let's hear from them, and then there may be more questions. Um, Angela Kaufman? Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Angela Kaufman, and I live at one zero five zero zero Dove Court, Newwala. Dove Court is located in the landing, which is just the area right here, I don't know if you would consider it on the side of the venue. Now, she's, she's claiming that she wants to do a wedding chapel, but what she has told us as residents, my house is the first one there, that she is doing a wedding venue and event center. A wedding chapel gives you the impression of a small church, small gathering, quiet, that's not what we're getting. We're getting a whole venue and an event center. You were addressing the issue of the trees for the buffer, the current trees that are there, they can be on their property on a normal Sunday afternoon with just a regular radio playing, and you can hear it just like you were sitting in their front room in my backyard. Now, you intensify that by ten with a DJ or a live band, and you eliminate ten percent of those trees, that noise is going to be unbearable. The road is less than forty foot from my property lot. I have no fence, you will have traffic coming in and out for the venue, you will have alcohol, we live in Newwala, we have no police department, we have to rely on Oklahoma City to come out if there are any issues. And all of this is an, is a big concern to most of the residents on one hundred and third street, I don't know about the rest of the neighborhood. We are also concerned of what is a venue of this style going to do to our property value. We just bought our property two years ago, we moved here from a big city, and we moved out there for the serenity and the quiet, because we didn't wanna be in the city. We could have bought our house in the city for less and had more house, that's not what we wanted. We don't want this noise, and we don't think it's beneficial for our neighbor.
Thank you. Kurt Strange?
My name is-
Ms.-
Hi. My name is Kurt Stange. Uh, I live at two one two one six Southeast one hundred and third, and I am the second house over from Dove Court, and we have had, most of the trees are, been cleared off around our house, we have a few along the back, along the back edge of my property. We've lived out there, uh, three months. I moved out there because it was quiet. I, uh, before we bought the property, I made about twenty trips out there, all different times, days, nights, weekends, and I drove around, and I found out that on the north side of, on the east side of, uh, the landing, there's a pipeline access, uh, section there, so there, I, there would be no, no more building, basically, and there'd be a little bit of machining down there and working on that, on the pipeline, and behind me where one hundred and fourth street was, looked like an access to the, to the, uh, pipeline road, and so I figured it'd be a quiet place to move. But, uh, this has all changed, they've, uh, they've decided to build this venue, telling us that if they came around the other night, and, uh, telling me that it was gonna run to, uh, uh, ten o'clock, and they'd shut it down, but, um, they really don't have any regard to our, uh, the quiet out there, because two weeks ago, they were out there running pools, which are earth movers, at, uh, twelve-thirty at night. They ran them all day and then all night. And then he comes and he says, uh, "Well, uh, I had to put a hundred thousand dollars worth of sod down so that I didn't, we didn't lose all that grade work." Well, when you do grade work and excavation, you lose a certain percentage, I mean, that's just the way it is in the construction world when you, when you grade like that. So he said, "That's why we ran it, those kind of long hours." Well, that's not the way I look at it. If he's gonna do that, then he's gonna do the same thing with these parties, you know, they're saying they're gonna have up to two hundred and ninety-nine people out there. Well, I don't know about you, but I work all week, and, uh, I come home and I want some goddamn peace and quiet, because, uh, I work around a lot of large machinery, and I wear earplugs ninety percent of the day, and I'm damn tired of listening to noise, and the last thing I wanna listen to is a bunch of crap running around out there, especially a bunch of drunks and everything else. Now, I'm not saying they're gonna have drunks.
Sir, please, I want you to-
Yeah, I understand that, yeah, but I'm just, you know, just a little, you know, you know, irritating about this, so anyhow, always use the language, so, but anyhow.
I appreciate you coming down. Todd Lindsay? Julie Karns?
My heart's pounding out of my chest, I'll just confess that, this is, I'm a rookie at this, um, like they're mentioning-
Me too.
Okay, take a deep breath, okay. If I faint, call nine-one-one, okay. Um, like they were mentioning, it's gonna be a wedding chapel, we were also told as well by her husband that it's gonna be an event center, and we are also told the hours are gonna be from eight till ten, now we're hearing it's eight till midnight. Uh, I live, I'm the third house on, on there, uh, that is basically my backyard. My husband and I spent probably seven months, um, looking for peace and quiet, moving from the city, businesses, et cetera. We paid nineteen thousand dollars for that one acre lot, and then we built a custom home on it. Uh, we've lived there nine years, August the fourth, and we were talking the other day before all this mess was, uh, would there be anything we would change about the house or the lot or where we live? And the answer was no. And I'm also a big environmentalist, and I have a lot of wildlife in my backyard, and if they were able to put this in, I know that's gonna eliminate my, I have deer, turtles, squirrels, bunny rabbits. Uh, someone made a reference to the movie In Bambi, when they were in my backyard one time, I don't know if you remember the scene in Bambi where all the birds and the deer and the, you know, bunny rabbits are hopping around and stuff, but that's kind of what it's like. And I know, um, I know having something like this in our backyard, also with it being an event center slash wedding chapel, that's gonna, uh, be nights, weekends, and holidays, and those are the times that we are out in our backyard enjoying the peace and quiet and living in the country. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
I see that there's somebody else there, did, was, did you wanna speak? Bring us your, come down.
My name is Bobby Kaufman.
Come to the-
My name's Bobby Kaufman, my address is one zero four zero zero, I'm the first house just to the north there on Dove Court. Uh, we were approached about two months ago about this possibly going forward with the planning on this venue that we were told about. Her, along with her husband, come by a few nights ago to show us the actual prints that they had of the venue that was gonna go up. At that time, we were told it's gonna be a twelve thousand square foot building. On top of that, it's gonna handle a crowd up to two hundred and ninety people. Now, if you can look up there on the map itself, the corner of my property line is less than forty feet, or, I'm sorry, forty feet from South one oh fourth. The tree line buffer that's there currently now, between our property and my, into my property, is probably less than ten feet. When they're out on their front porch listening to a radio, or they're over there playing volleyball on their property, I can hear that echoing across their property to my backyard there. Another issue I have with it, the venue this size that they're wanting to put up on their property, I understand that they're wanting to do this. From what they told us the other night, they have several acres over there, and why they chose this particular spot right on our back doorstep, I do not know. Construction equipment, we've already heard that, the tenth and the eleventh of August was going all day up until midnight, and I can tell you right now, I'm an aircraft mechanic, I retired from the Air Force for twenty-four years. I deal with noise on a daily basis. Currently, I work with Tinker as civil service. What do I do? I'm still doing aircraft maintenance, so yes, I deal with the noise, but when I get off work, I work long hours, I work seven days a week. I like to come home and be able to unwind at my house and decompress, and not have to worry about noise. This being right on my back doorstep, we're gonna have to deal with traffic, we're gonna have to deal with lighting that's coming in on one oh fourth, and of course, with it being a wedding venue, there's gonna be alcohol served, and I'm gonna leave it at that. Bands and DJs play until ten o'clock during the weekday nights. Like I said, I'm an aircraft mechanic. My, my day starts at three-thirty in the morning, I try to be in the bed and asleep by eight or eight-thirty in the evening time, so I can get a decent night's sleep. This is gonna interfere with that. Not only that, it interferes with my neighbors, they have early morning work schedules as well. As far as for the weekends, that's when we wanna spend time with our family at our place and not deal with any of the outside noise, but now we're gonna have up to three hundred people right on my back doorstep. I understand her desire to move forward this development, but I don't see it being beneficial being where it's located at right now on her property. We've been told directly by both of them the other night when they come by, we've got more money, we know what to do with, this is her dream to put up this wedding venue. But to me, it's a business, they wanna make more money, but it's gonna be coming at my expense and my neighbor's expense being on our back doorsteps. And as far as I can say on this, it's not gonna be beneficial for us, we're not getting anything out of this, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you for your time today.
Commissioners? Sure, of course.
The design statement, I think, addresses some of their concerns with regard to the types of events that will be held at that location. Uh, it's, it's, it's described as a special event center such as weddings, baby showers, bridal shows, baby bridal showers, reunions, and other gatherings. Now, the other gatherings leaves some ambiguity, but the, the primary thrust is for events, family-type events, bridal showers, et cetera, weddings. The bands or music that is gonna be, uh, provided will be occurring inside the building, so it should not be something that you could hear.
Mrs. Bradling, when I asked your client if she could commit to that, she told me no. Come forward.
We spoke last night, my husband and I, about ways to help keep the community happy, and we can agree to only have the DJs and the band inside of the hall itself, but have light processional and light strings, like if someone wanted maybe, you know, acoustic guitar, no subwoofers or any type of loud music outside, we would be in agreement to make that amendment.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please.
That's pretty much concludes my remarks, thank you.
Okay. Commissioners? Um, we're seeing more and more of these, um, applications, uh, people seem to have an overwhelming desire to get married in the country, um, and, you know, they're, they're just using inherent conflict in this kind of, an event center, they're, they're, you know, rural areas, um, but they have peak periods of intense activity, and they generally come with music and, and, uh, traffic and so on, so, um-
Commissioner, it does not appear that, you know, this, um, would, would be appropriate for this area, because it seems like it's going to really invade upon, uh, really the residents in this area and really cause undue hardship on them. And I love the building, I love the design of it, but it may not be appropriate for this particular spot.
One of the contestants raised the question of whether the property, it could be reconfigured, whether there was a room on the property to relocate the building, do you wanna speak to that?
The frontage of our property is in a ESA, and it is in a floodplain, and this is that we moved it as far back as we could possibly move it on our property.
It's- Sorry, something that, I'm looking at an aerial on Google Maps, something that is not apparent from the map that you get with the city's packet, is that there's, I don't, I don't even know what to call that, is it like a lagoon? What is that?
That's a lake, it's a ten-acre lake, which actually brings a lot of the nature that the people get to enjoy out there.
So when you look at their site plan, you can understand, how much of that do you own?
We own the whole thirty-five, and we have the first option to buy at the back, which is currently a pud for, uh, owned by Brent Cook for another development.
My point is just to really, to answer your question, given what, it looks like she owns from the property boundaries, it's about the only place they could put it because of that lagoon, so.
It sounds to me like, based on discussion with Jim, that maybe you need to go back to the homeowners and see if things can be worked out. I mean, there's a lot of emotion being expressed, and I don't know if that can be solved, but, I can't support the, uh, application, you know, right now.
We would like to see if we could continue this meeting for a period of time so that we could get with the residents, see if we can work out some of their concerns, if that's possible.
How long it continues would you like to take?
The next meeting's September the fourteenth.
It is?
Let's just, if it's okay with the commissioners, I would like to request-
Will, will that give you enough time, or are you sure that'll give you enough time?
Yeah, we can get the survey, and we can try to have a meeting with the homeowners, set up a meeting with the homeowners, and make changes to the spud to help, because-
Compatible with neighbors?
Yes.
Um, I, I would be okay with that, on the condition that we get names and addresses for each of the people that are here today, and, or phone numbers, email addresses, whatever it would take to actually notify them, and if then it turns out not to be enough time, that you'll be able to notify them, and they won't come down here for no reason, so.
Okay.
Um, so do I have a motion to continue until September the fourteenth, is that right?
I'm moved.
I have a motion, a second, to continue this item until September the fourteenth. Cast your votes, please.
Thank, thank you very-
It's continued.
Thank you for your patience.
Sure, thank you for yours, those benches are a lot harder than what we're sitting on.
Item forty-one is S.P.U.D. nine ninety-eight, Theresa, thirty-six oh one, southwest forty-fourth, from P.U.D. fourteen twelve- Item 41 is S.P.U.D. 998 to rezone 3601 Southwest 44th from P.U.D. 1412 to P.U.D. 998.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Shabbats, and I am co-owner of Lifestyle Home Improvement, with Chris Stone, my business partner. And we purchased one and a half acres, and we want to rezone this from the PUD 1412 We are planning, planning on putting our corporate office facing St. Clair. And I just have a couple questions about the site proof screening, but other than that, that's what we have.
I have a couple questions about EMD signage.
Yes, ma'am.
You don't really want EMD signage, do you?
I'm sorry?
So you don't really want EMD signage, do you?
The signage?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we do want signage, like-
EMD signage, the, you know, full-blown moving video?
No, ma'am, we understand, we're close to the airport. I guess I'm unclear about your question. Oh, the LED? Oh, no, ma'am, we're not going to have that.
Oh, that's a good answer.
Sorry.
There are three points of access to the site, do we have a problem with that? Is that right, three points of access?
We did have, we requested access off of 43rd, we are in agreeance with the request to not have that access.
Is there anybody else here who wants to be heard on this item? We've gotten rid of almost everybody. No? Commissioners, comments, questions? Motions?
Make the motion, we approve this.
I have a motion and a second, that we approve this item with the elimination of EMD signage, and in compliance with the TEs.
Thank you.
Cast your votes, please. It's approved.
Thank you, ma'am. I do have one question, though.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the site proof screening, we are going to put our corporate office facing St. Clair, and there's an empty field that's owned by the bank, directly across the street from our property. And it's, the fence that you guys are proposing that we put up would be a wood fence or a fence that is opaque, opaque. And basically, it would obstruct the view from our, from the road to our corporate office to the front of our building. So we are requesting that we could put up like a really nice wrought iron fence, something, you know, that would look really nice from the road, that would, I guess, keep the obstruction down to a minimum. Because we can only, from what I'm reading, we can only have a one-story building, and there's nothing in front of our, St. Clair is just an empty field, and the highway comes right across from the other side of that. Now, I do agree that the fence on 43rd needs to be, you know, a stockade fence, or, you know, a fence that you can't see through because of the houses and things like that, not to say our land and our buildings, but directly across the street from St. Clair, there's just nothing there.
Yeah, staff is more concerned, really, with the fence on the north. If they want to do something different on the east and west, we're fine with that.
Oh, okay. Thank you, sir.
You'll make sure that gets noted, however it needs to be noted, so that when they get ready to go do it, they'll be in good shape.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All problems were so easily solved.
Okay. Item 42 is S.P.U.D. 999 to rezone 7800 Northwest 94th Street from C3 to S.P.U.D. 999.
Mr. Box.
Feels as if I've offended staff for being placed at this location, or perhaps my client has. David Box, 522 Callcore Drive. Also with me still at dinnertime is my client, Brent Lowell. I feel like he deserves special recognition.
We're ordering pizza later, so.
Our application is a SPUD that will allow a office warehouse type use. What I've handed out are the elevations that were in your packet. What he proposes to do is to build a metal building, but clad it with a brick or stone veneer. These are actually buildings that Brent has constructed. So he's going to mirror this project over here in terms of quality of finish. This is a use that has become wildly popular. The exhibit that you see before you has changed slightly to what I have here in front of me. The unique thing about this area, if anybody drove it, if you look at the zoning, it is a massive amount of C3 that is all retail, but it's all vacant. It's kind of sad, you've got a lot of just empty retail space there. Part of it is, it's a very odd location to access. Brent just dies and then turns, and then you end up at council. So we think the uses are compatible with those that are surrounding. I do need to address a couple of the TEs. We agree with 1, 4, and 5. 3 and 6 are kind of companion. What we propose to do is to eliminate all access to Westgate, and have, and limit our access to 94th, to two streets, excuse me, two access points, as depicted here. So what I'd ask to do is replace 3 and 6 with a new TE that prohibits access onto Westgate, and limits it to two access points on 94th Street. Additionally, TE number 2 asks for a 20-foot building limit line off of the sanitary sewer main. There are already easements in place, you've got a 20-foot easement in place on both the south side of our property and the west side, so there's already adequate easements in place for all necessary infrastructure. So we'd ask that TE number 2 be deleted. That's all I have.
We're going to eliminate TE 2?
That's what I'm requesting, yes.
And we're okay with that? What about the access issue? JJ just gets easier and easier, the longer he has to sit on that wooden bench. Okay, I didn't have any questions on this one. This is a very unusual piece of property, it's just kind of stuck out there, and it's a mess.
At one point relatively recently, I do not recall when, but the other retail he references, one of those buildings was constructed relatively recently and is set vacant for, I, in the entire time. So I drive by this fairly regularly, so.
It's odd, it's very odd. So, do I have a motion?
So I'll move. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 42. Cast your votes, please. It's approved.
Thank you.
So that's the advantage of staying late.
Item number 43 is an ordinance to be introduced and set for recommendation. On the September 28th Planning Commission meeting, this is a change to the zoning and planning code. JJ will give you an update on a few things to consider that are different from what we presented in the study session in UDC about this.
Right, this is the second part of a two-part issue to try and address residential non-conforming driveways, that was brought up by Councilman McAtee. These are properties that were developed prior to any parking requirements. They're homes that don't have and have never had a driveway. And they've been getting yard parking tickets for parking on not having a driveway. First part of this issue was addressed by reducing the fee for variance for non-conforming driveways to $100, and that basically matches the fee for the fine for yard parking. What this ordinance does, right now, the code requires a maximum, allows a maximum of 12-foot width to park a car on if you don't have a driveway. It has to be perpendicular to the street. And what that does, it forces these people to have to park tandem. This ordinance will allow that to be expanded to 20 feet, so they can park side by side like a normal two-car driveway. If they park side by side now, one of those cars is getting a yard parking ticket. The approach, there's a recent amendment that was requested by code enforcement, make sure we keep the approach at 12 feet. But once you come onto your property, it can widen out to 20 to allow for those two cars to park side by side, and hopefully cut down on some of these citations that people are receiving.
Now, I had some serious concerns about this initially, but if I recall correctly, the ordinance is only applicable to properties that were never, that never had driveways. And so it's not just a license for people to start parking in their front yards, I mean, or even start paving their front yards.
Code enforcement would have to determine that they are legally non-conforming, that they don't have a driveway, never had had a driveway, and if they're going to park, they have to conform to this new ordinance. If they go in and pave any portion of that driveway, then they're required to bring the whole thing up to code.
Okay.
Commissioners, you also asked to see some examples of some of the existing conditions, and if you can find it in the stack of papers you've accumulated throughout the meeting, we do have some photographs with you, so that you can see what some of these non-conforming
What we're doing today is setting this down for hearing, basically. Have a motion?
Move for adoption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to set this ordinance amendment down for hearing at September 14th, is that what we're, 28th? September 28th. Cast your votes, please. And that's what we'll do, we'll hear it on the 28th.
The remaining items on the agenda were withdrawn or continued.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just, Commissioner, just before we do-
I'm sorry.
Just before we do, I want to just acknowledge the fact that this week, we celebrated the 59th anniversary of the sit-in movement in Oklahoma City. It has been attributed by Clara Lupa, but it has been attributed sometimes to Greensboro, North Carolina, when the sit-in movement started in Oklahoma City, at Katz Drugstore, and changed the face of the nation, and 13 other states participated in sit-ins around the country. This week, we celebrated 59 years, and I just want to acknowledge that, and Mrs. Clara Lupa and her work.
Thank you. And, yes, we do, I'm sorry, we do have, I asked Katie Friedel to find Katz Drugstore for me, and she did. Ma'am, is there something that you need from us? Bless your heart.
Do we move to adjourn?
Do it.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Let's vote, shall we? We're adjourned.